Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, June sixth or June third regular school board meeting. The time is now six P M. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Maple, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Charlie has excused Mr. Wade.
Here.
Colonel Cole.
Here.
Colonel Foster.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Here.
Mr. Doran.
Here.
Ms. Dulean.
Here.
Ms. Maple.
Here.
Mrs. Hardy is on Zoom.
Here.
Thank you. And Mrs. Burnett.
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
Next up on the agenda will be our school board Fort Wainwright representative recognition, Colonel Jason Cole, Fort Wainwright, U S Army Garrison Alaska Commander, will be recognized for his service to the school board. And if you would give me just a minute, I will make my way over there. Colonel Cole, if you'd please join me up here. It is my honor today to recognize Colonel Jason Cole, Fort Wainwright, U S Army Garrison Alaska Commander, for his service and partnership with the school board. Colonel Cole, your leadership and steady presence have meant a great deal to this board and to our entire school community. Throughout your time here, you've not only represented the Fort Wainwright community with dedication and professionalism, you've also been a trusted voice and a valued partner. In times of challenge and uncertainty, your advice has helped guide us. You've offered thoughtful perspective, practical wisdom, and at times simply been a listening ear for board members who needed it. That kind of support goes far and beyond duty. It speaks to your character, your compassion, and your deep commitment to serving others. We are incredibly grateful for the way you've worked to build and strengthen the connection between Fort Wainwright and our schools. Your impact will continue to be felt long after your time here. On behalf of the board, thank you for your service, your counsel, and your friendship. We wish you all the best in what lies ahead.
Well, I was writing a speech because I thought maybe you would call me up. But what I did want to say was, uh, thank you to the present and past board members over these past two years that I've had the pleasure of, I guess it's not really serving alongside, but the honor of serving as an advisor for the Fort Wainwright community here. The passion that each and every one of the present and past board members have shown has really been deeply touching to me as a father of kids in the school district and as, you know, military, you know, commander here and taking care of, you know, our families at Fort Wainwright. I'm going to miss my time, you know, on the school board. I am sticking around in the area of the Golden Heart put their hooks in me. So we've decided to finish our career here in Fairbanks North Pole area of Alaska. It truly is the Golden Heart City here in Fairbanks. And I've gotten a lot of that experience and a lot of the experience and the comments and the members of this board were very instrumental in helping us decide that this is the final place that we do want to stay here. So thank you, board members, for bringing your passion and your love of this community and the education of tomorrow's future here in Alaska. So thank you.
Before you take your walk, would any board members like to say anything to Colonel Cole? Mrs. Hardy?
Sorry, my hand wasn't raised, but I would be happy. Colonel Cole, it has been a privilege to serve alongside you and we really did serve together. You were an advisor, but you showed up to meetings. I still remember last year, um, you coming and giving us such valuable information during one of our work sessions around school closures. Uh, it has been an honor to get to know you and I'm really excited to hear that you're staying in Fairbanks and that we're going to get the benefit of you and your family alongside us for years to come.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Thank you for your service on all levels and broad categories. Two things that really stood out for me over these last years working with you. Um, one is the, I've really appreciated your sharing the broader military perspective, um, because we are impacted not only in Fairbanks by our post and base, but, uh, what's going on nationally and you've offered some insights into that. Um, I've appreciated the explanations drawing on your experience as we entered strategic planning, some of your conversations there with us individually, et cetera, and, uh, and also your bluntness that, yeah, this is the way things are in the military or this is, you know, something that you need to consider. Um, because I think that has helped us as we navigate, um, public education within our state, within our community. Um, the other thing I wanted to express is the appreciation that you really proactively worked on getting all board members, um, on the Friends of the Army, uh, list. So it really made our entree to the post, uh, very easy. And, um, and, you know, when my own experience going to the front gate and talking to them, they'd, oh yeah, here you are on the list. We can do this for you, uh, which makes it a lot easier for us to visit schools on, on post, visit students and staff there. Uh, and I know it's broader benefits, but that is one of the things, your thoughtfulness, uh, to make that as easy for people to, uh, really be part of the, the post community as well. So thank you for all that thoughtfulness.
Mrs. Dulean?
Colonel Cole, I just want to thank you. Um, one thing that you did this year that was deeply meaningful to me was during our school closure meeting, you really helped me and I think others on this board gain a perspective and reminder of the, of the budget and the overall goal of what we were trying to achieve. And I think, and I just want to thank you for that because it was, um, you were an anchor during that highly emotional meeting. So thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
I have something similar to say to that. Um, I've, I've, I've been watching this board since long before I decided to run for it. Um, and, uh, I've been very impressed at every step of the way when I hear you speak, Colonel Cole, um, uh, for some of the reasons already expressed. So I won't belabor them, but there's one moment when I, when I was a board member that, that, uh, I, I really have to thank you for. Um, it was a particularly contentious, uh, night of public testimony, um, a lot of which was directed at me. I think you know what I'm talking about. Um, and, uh, and I just remember when we, when we took our, uh, our break after public testimony, I had a lot of anxiety, of course, and, and you just stopped me. You asked me a completely unrelated question as I was leaving the room to hit the restroom. And I, I didn't really realize it at the time, but later on I, I thought about what it was that you were doing there. And, uh, and I think it was intentional that you pulled me out of that state. You were, you were, um, making sure that I was able to kind of reset, move on and, uh, and get the work done. And, um, and I just can't thank you enough for, for, for taking that moment and, and having that thoughtfulness, uh, because it really did pull me back and, and helped me, uh, uh, not just get through the rest of that meeting, but really as I thought about it again later on, it, uh, it bolstered me over and over again. So, um, that's the kind of thing that, that I love to see us all do for each other on this board. Um, and, uh, and I just appreciate that, um, uh, that modeling and, uh, and that action that you took. So, um, so thank you and thank you for all of the excellent advice and perspectives that you provided over, over your service here.
Once again, thank you, Colonel Cole. Next up is the adoption of the agenda with consent items. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member anytime prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. May I have a motion to approve the agenda with consent items?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second?
Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is public comments and reports and non-agenda items. During this section of the agenda, the school board welcomes public comments on non-agenda topics. This is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The board will note the topics, though no official actions will be taken. Topics may be referred to the administration for further research and future potential action. Board members will not respond to comments or questions made by the public. Concerned citizens should first discuss matters with the superintendent or designee. After the superintendent or designee has heard the concerns, they may be brought to the board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the district office to route concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at the time the item is introduced for action and/or discussion. Once the agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the school board office by four P M. on the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Students who have signed up in advance will be called upon first, followed by members of the public who have signed up in advance in the order in which they have signed up. If time remains, anyone else in person will be invited to testify until the one hour time limit has been reached. A sign up sheet is available in the boardroom before the start of each meeting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and should provide their first name, spelling their last, and state their area of residence. Any students in the room at this time wishing to testify? Seeing none, we will move on to our list. And first up, we have Ms. Heidi Wood. Good evening, Ms. Wood. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Heidi Wood, W O O D. Good evening. As many of you know, I am the Chair of the Pearl Creek Steam A P C. I am here to read pieces of the letter sent from Dr. Deana Bishop, the Commissioner of Education for the State of Alaska to the F N S B S D lawyers. It was sent on May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. She begins, "I am sending this communication in an effort to clarify any confusion that may surround my May twelfth letter regarding the Pearl Creek Steam Charter Schools' April twenty one appeal to Commissioner pursuant to Alaska Statute fourteen oh three two five O D. In my May twelfth letter to the party, contrary to some assertions, I did in fact instruct the board to take action with respect to P C S C's charter school application. Specifically, my letter communicated that I am remanding this matter back to the school board for it to carry out its duties as required by Alaska Statute fourteen oh three two five O B. My remand was issued under the authority granted to the Commissioner in Alaska Statute fourteen oh three two five two A to remand an appeal to the local school board for further review. As such, it was my expectation that the school board would take up P C S C's application at a future meeting and to provide the applicants with the written decision they are due. Otherwise, a local school board threatens to frustrate a charter school applicant's obligation to exhaust its remedies to the point where likely the only way to achieve the legal process it is due is to pursue costly litigation for judicial intervention." She continues, "To be clear, I am not suggesting that the board should waive or override its policy. Instead, I am merely reminding the board that on remand pursuant to Alaska Statute fourteen oh three two five two A, it was my direction that the board issue a written decision that includes all relevant findings of fact and conclusions of law. As Alaska Statute fourteen oh three two five O B compels all local school boards to do, regardless of whether an application is filed before or after the deadline set by a local school board. A board is still mandated by law to issue a decision on that application within the timeframe required under Alaska Statute fourteen oh three two five O B." She concludes, "I understand the school board held a meeting on May twentieth where the issue of P C S C's application was discussed, both by the board and members of the public, but it was not placed on that meeting's agenda. It is the interest, in the interest of maintaining compliance with the school laws of the state, on remand, the board is strongly encouraged to take up P C S C's application as soon as possible and issue a written decision on the application as required by Alaska Statute fourteen oh three two five O B." Again, she's asking you to do the job you've been elected to do. Please do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have April Monroe. Good evening, Ms. Monroe. If you could state your names, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Hey guys, April Monroe, M O N R O E, here in Fairbanks. Um, I thought about like making notes in a cool speech, like to talk passively aggressively to our community while I look at you because I feel like that's kind of like the thing. But looking at you, I don't want to talk to them. I want to talk to you, right? Like, I am so frustrated with you guys. We have this stream, like a very choreographed public testimony the last meeting, talking about how like, where did this wicked community of Pearl Creekers get this idea that a policy should be waived for them? Like, how special do they think they are? From you guys, guys, we got it from you. Bobby, you brought it up, February fourth. Melissa and Meredith, you guys talked about it at length at Two Rivers. You did. Bobby, don't shake your head at the closure meeting, review it. You guys suggested that it was your policy that you could look into fast tracking charter schools. At Two Rivers, you guys talked on and on about how the school board could certainly waive their policy, that the holdup would be through the state. Um, Tim has mentioned many times it's just a policy. Morgan, you've mentioned multiple times that you guys could waive the policy. Um, that's where we got the idea. And then you say, where did these people get the idea to call the state? As if this is outrageous behavior to follow procedure. From you. You guys said that the delay would be at the state level. And the way that has felt for me to engage with this board is, um, yeah, I mean, I email you guys because I don't want to cry about it. I feel like I am not part of my kids' education, you know? Um, I feel like you guys weaponize conversations about Indigenous people and children when it's convenient, but that you ignore us when we show up. Um, being uninvited from the education of your children, um, feeling like you're being plotted against. I mean, you guys are hiring attorneys to fight parents that want to be involved in educating our kids. You get up and talk about my children like an idea to bolster your ideas while you ignore the actual ideas of Indigenous people. I, it's painful, you guys. It's harmful. Um, Bobby, I campaigned for you. I stuck up for you during Buttgate. Like, I worked hard on that. Kristin, I've known you most of my life. You know that I don't want to enact harm. Melissa, like, I hate your politics. There's so many times that I don't want to like you and I like you. Like, Meredith, I love so many people who love you. It, this, Morgan, our friends are kids. This sucks. This has been so painful. Um, and it does just feel like, I don't want to come here because I know I'm not welcome here because you guys say unkind things about me in our shared communities. You're mad at me for wanting to be part of my kids' education after I helped to elect you to these seats. It's, it sucks, guys. It really does. And it's not the comment that I meant to make, but that's the comment I have.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Monroe. Up next, we have Ms. Christina Turman. Good evening, Ms. Turman. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Christina Turman, T U R M A N. Um, some of you may wonder why I haven't been at meetings lately, and here's why. Early in the process, you, a lot of board members expressed not only the ability, but also a willingness to expedite charter applications for closed schools. And at that point, it felt like having conversations with this board and coming here to testify was a good use of my time. However, there was a major turning point for me in late February when myself and another Pearl Creek parent encountered a school board member in town. This was one week after we'd submitted our charter application. This board member told us, "If you continue with your charter application, we are going to litigate." Both of us were honestly shocked by this statement. The other parent immediately asked, "What could you possibly litigate over? Submitting a charter application is in no way illegal." And the school board member's response was, "Oh, I don't care about winning or losing. All I know is that if we litigate, we can stall your process long enough that your school can't open. That's all I care about because I'm petty like that." And now, months later, here we are. Our charter application remains unheard. A lawyer has been hired by the school district and conversations with this board really do seem pointless. Because let me tell you, it is a real big vibe change when you're supposed to include the school district's attorney when you want to communicate a potential, about a potential school you want to open. Um, and this just like really has made me miss the good old days back when I could meet with Dr. Minor to openly discuss ideas about the Pearl Creek Steam School. Um, it was great to discuss the community connections I was building with scientists and artists, the potential that maybe some grant writers from our parent team could collaborate closely with the district's grant writer to secure funding, not just for our school, but for the district as a whole. Brainstorming, how could a charter school provide transportation and be more accessible to all students in our district? Did we agree about everything? Absolutely not. Dr. Minor made it really clear to me that starting a charter school for fall twenty twenty five, though not impossible, would be quite challenging. Um, I bet you wish you would have just told me it was impossible at this point. Honestly, I kind of do too. But, um, you didn't, and I think that's because you're an honest person. Um, I really appreciate that. I believe integrity, honesty, and the ability to bring people together who hold vastly different views to work towards a common cause, those are the marks of a great leader. But now we find ourselves in this pretty sad situation where communicating with you all on this idea is pretty much unfeasible. However, we can still connect with fellow community members. And I'm saying this just as much as a reminder to myself as others. We need to stop and recognize the extreme power of confirmation bias. When we only engage with those who share our views and any engagement with those who are in opposition to them is just to fight them, then we are personally responsible for creating a toxic and polarized environment. We all need to adopt a curious mindset. When we take the time to understand opposing viewpoints and the experiences behind them, something remarkable happens. These people you're in opposition to, they become human again. And your anger melts away. I know we all have the ability to disagree while still respecting and understanding one another. And I really think we owe it to our community to do just that.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Scott Shire. Shire, sorry. Good evening. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Sure. My name's Scott Shire, excuse me, S H I R A R, and I live in Fairbanks. Um, so I wrote out my testimony tonight. I didn't want to go overtime and I also didn't want to leave anything out. So I'm going to read, um, from my prepared statement here. So I'm here this evening to provide testimony in favor of the board reviewing the application to open Pearl Creek as a steam charter school. So even though the application was not submitted prior to the fall deadline, the timing of the school, excuse me, the timing of the school closures made that an impossible deadline to meet. My testimony tonight is not against other schools. Also, I want to make that clear. I have been and remain a strong advocate for public education. That being said, I do, I remain in favor of official review of the Pearl Creek Steam Charter application for many reasons, not the least of which is that the board's refusal to review the application over the past several months has incubated community strife. The Pearl Creek Steam Charter Academic Policy Committee has been trying for several months to meet with the district to discuss discrepancies in numbers, specifically that the district has estimated a much higher cost for the charter than the, um, than the academic policy committee has calculated, both internally and as audited by an independent accountant. This major discrepancy in the unwillingness to discuss it has fostered an atmosphere of distrust with members of the community, all trying to do best for what Fairbank, or all trying to do best for Fairbanks kids, um, but working with inconsistent data. This, I would argue, has led to adversarial discourse and an unwarranted assignment of fault to Pearl Creek Charter for the district's finances. Many existing charter schools operate in the district. Um, excuse me, I lost my place here. Um, so yeah, many other Pearl, uh, and they do a wonderful job for their students. So many of these other charter schools. And it seems disingenuous to assign such responsibility to the Pearl Creek Charter as potentially devastating to the district while not addressing the impact of other charter schools, the impact of the general district administration costs, or more importantly, the high number of students in our area who are not enrolled in the Fairbanks North Star School, uh, the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District, sorry. Um, so there's a strong tradition of parental involvement within the Pearl Creek community that's eager to start a different kind of charter, make it more accessible, offer before and after childcare, provide transportation options, and obtain grants that will contribute to and help our entire school district. I'm not here tonight asking for blind approval of the application, but I am asking that you take a hard look and agree to enter into serious positive discussions about how we as a community can fix the problems we're facing. To me, it's evident that we're going to find ourselves in the same position of closing more schools at the beginning of the next calendar year if changes aren't made. I believe a school like the proposed Pearl Creek Steam Charter application could attract students in our community back to the district, strengthening opportunities for all Fairbanks kids, um, only if we can focus on common ground. To get there, we need to open productive lines of communication. And to me, one great way to do that would be to review and honestly comment on this application. That's everything I wanted to say tonight on, for myself and my family. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Ms. Emily Potter. Good evening, Ms. Potter. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Hey. Emily Potter, P O T T E R, and I'm in Fairbanks. I'm here today to express my sadness about the current state of our elementary school community. The Pearl Creek Steam Charter was built on the neighborhood school motto of inspired, compassionate, and involved. While it may not have been the intention, the process this year to close schools has created a huge divide within our small community. Everyone's feelings and concerns are valid, but there has been no opportunity for open dialogue. Providing a three-minute testimony that doesn't allow for questions, follow-up, or a healthy discussion will not lead to, lead to a positive outcome. We all have valid arguments, but have not been able to engage in clear, respectful conversation. Understanding comes from explaining why. We may not agree to change our beliefs, but we can choose dialogue over dismissal. I think that was the part that was missed this year. All we wanted was to present our application and having a meaningful conversation with feedback. We were just asking to be heard. My testimony is not to say that one opinion is right or wrong. I think we are all right. We need to find a happy medium. I think, or I'm here to say that this process was designed to fail from the beginning, or maybe it didn't fail. And maybe the goal was to have parents upset with each other instead of at the administration. Either way, we all have something in common. We want what is best for our kids. I've gained a lot over this law year, this last year, most of which is perspective, but also a sense of humor, restraint, and a few other things along the way. I have learned that all levels of government cannot be trusted, that the Pearl Creek Charter parents are valued when they're advocating to state legislators and the governor, but a nuisance when advocating at the local level. This town is small, probably about four degrees of separation at most, and work gets around fast when you aren't saying nice things about each other. I think I have become a conspiracy theorist trying to determine how decisions are being made when equal and opposite reasons are given for various outcomes. I have learned that children are, that our children have a financial value. Homeschool children are more valuable because they can have a high P T R. Charter school children are not as valuable because charters have control at the school level and can make financial decisions without the school. and can make fin- financial decisions without the school board involvement. Neighborhood schools get the short stick because they cannot depend on consistency and change can happen at any time. I might be wrong, but the results have shown me otherwise. Don't forget those students that have experienced a school closure for the second time in their elementary career, but it's okay. They're resilient. I have come to appreciate the perspective of parents who choose correspondence or schools of choice. There was a time that I didn't think I would ever share those same visions, but here I am. School is not one size fits all. Each child has educational needs, and there are different schools that can meet them, but waitlists prevent that access. And most importantly, I have gained a new community of friends. People who were at one time just acquaintances at school pickup or kid activities, but they are now a close circle of friends who came together with a common interest to improve the educational experiences in Fairbanks. Please take my thoughts into consideration over the summer so that next year we can work together instead of working against each other. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Mr. Solomon Pomerantz. Good evening, Mr. Pomerantz. If you could state your name, spelling your last, you'll have three minutes.
Solomon Pomerantz, uh, P O M E R A N T Z. Good evening, everyone. Live in Goldstream. Um, over the last few months, uh, PCSC has endeavored to be as transparent as possible with the district and has repeatedly requested that the district share budgetary data to allow us to verify our own calculations and understand the district's own projections. To date, the district has rebuffed our requests and has repeatedly denied a records request for a 30-tap spreadsheet, which district administration referenced and accidentally shared in the school board meeting. It's concerning uh, for us that the district's estimates for costs have varied significantly over the past months. At a board meeting in January 6th, it was estimated that annualized cost savings of seventeen, 1.7 million dollars would be realized from the closure of Pearl Creek. Uh, there are analysis demonstrated a net uh, positive operating income to the district. And then on February 18th, the district estimated 3.5 million dollar costs for opening PCSC. Then on March 3rd, 4.3 million dollars. Back in April 2024, the district administration estimated that additional costs of operating a charter were in the order of hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. We simply wish to understand where these figures are coming from, as we've not reached the same conclusions uh, with our estimates based on known costs and revenues, such as BSA and a 4% statutory overhead. We think that financial transparency is vital uh, to ensure public trust, not only in the process of school closures, but also in handling proposed charter school. Over 500 community members recently signed a petition within 24 hours uh, of it being released, that the charter be heard, and I find it baffling uh, that this has been met with silence. Lastly, um, PCSC has from the outset endeavored to be both equitable and financially sustainable. Regardless of political positions, um, education budgets are being cut at the federal level. However, there is significant federal funding in form of grants right now for charter schools, open right now. Um, for instance, 5 million dollars for the charter school program development grants, 72 million dollars for the replication expansion of charter schools grant, 4 million dollars for the model development dissemination grant, and 60 million dollars in the CSP credit enhancement grants. Um, PCSC is committed to using this school to revitalize educational experiences in Fair, in Fairbanks, and we're ready to help secure funding through these programs, especially given that many of them are oriented towards the expansion of charter schools and best practices. I'd also note the demand for charters here in Fairbanks. Uh, during the strategic planning process back in April, uh, 60% of community survey respondents expressed a desire to explore educational models and practices within charter schools. Existing charter schools in the district have eye-watering waitlists, and it's clear that the demand in the community for charter schools is not being met. I would ask you to be responsive to this demand and be our partners in this process, not adversaries. You have a committed group of parents, an engaged community with a vision for the education of their children, and I just ask you to engage with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Nicole Matthews. Oh, and I think she's on Zoom. Ms. Matthews, can you hear us?
I can.
There we go. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Uh, Nicole Matthews, M A T T H E W S, Fairbanks. When people ask me what my favorite things are about Alaska, I tell them, um, in no, like, in this order. Um, our coffee, because we get it from a shed the way God intended it, Northern Lights, and our school. I love our school. Our school helped our tradition, our transition to Alaska become tolerable. Our school is University Park. I'm speaking today to advocate for all of our students and to tell uh, the Pearl, the Pearl Creek Charter, good job. Thank you. I would like to address the virtue signaling against Pearl Creek parents. There's a bold spoken notion that the advocacy of Pearl Creek parents are doing to open Pearl Creek would somehow be taken away from or be disadvantaged to other students in our district, and it is just not true. It is simply not true. I'm from the deep south, so if you want to pit borderlines or social status as a means of taking advantage of each other, you can do that. But we live in Fairbanks, and that's not what's happening here. And it is poor scholarship to believe that is happening. Um, the virtue signaling here is just a way for people to pit their frustration with our state government and make it happen here. There's no reason to pit this as something, as someone taking something from one student in order to give it to another. That is absolutely not the case. Again, I'm a University Park parent, and I am disappointed that this has been the narrative that's been allowed to continue about this problem. Pearl Creek opening benefits all of our students. In fact, the numbers produced by third-party accountants shows that we could improve the deficit by helping draw students from out of district into the district. And while those numbers are muddy, they are muddied because our Board of Education has refused to comply with a FOIA request. In the non-compliance of the FOIA request, it leads me to ask, what is the district hiding, and why are they intentionally dragging their feet? The only conclusion we can rightfully draw from this is malice. An intentional effort to delay opening a charter would greatly benefit our students. It would be helpful for parents to know where their kids are going to go to school, but our board is dragging their feet, and they mean to. They mean to. Closing Pearl Creek was a poor decision made with limiting beliefs. The deficit existed way before the Pearl Creek Charter application came into place, and it will continue to exist after. By closing Pearl Creek and not approving the charter, you continue to harm students. Again, I am a University Park parent, and I am more than impressed by Pearl Creek parents advocacy. Because when their kids win, my kids win. And Pearl Creek parents, I hope you look at this experience with discontent for our school board, and I hope you reflect on this experience and go take their seat at election.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Ms. Beth Zirbes. Good evening, Ms. Zirbes. If you could please state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Beth Zirbes, Z I R B E S, and I live in Esther. I am here again tonight to voice my support for the school board's decision to stick with school board policy and not hear the Pearl Creek Steam Charter School application outside of the normal deadlines. After reading the district's 17-page response outlining the many unknowns, the only responsible decision at this point in time is to wait. Going forward, I do not believe that charter schools are the proper avenue for developing more schools of choice. As they are run in this state and this district, charter schools are inherently inequitable and less diverse. With each new charter we have added to this district, the results have been the same. At the last board meeting, I spoke to the socioeconomic discrepancies, and today I want to touch on the racial aspects. Using the district dashboards, I determined the percentage of the student body which identifies as non-Caucasian. Over the years, boreal sun has averaged 8.5%, Chinook 8.4%, Discovery Peaks 7.8%, and Watershed is at 9%. Compare this to our neighborhood schools in the same grades, which have averaged 24%. I don't think I need to explain that race is highly tied with family income and education level. Magnet schools are a better, but still not perfect model for schools of choice. Barnett Magnet School is 17% non-Caucasian, which is much more in line with the district average. Barnett has also averaged 31% economically disadvantaged, which is much higher and closer to the district average than any of the charter schools. Barnett is also currently running at capacity. If we are to make investments in our neighborhood schools in the future, which I believe that we should, magnet schools are the model that we should use. I would once again like to encourage exploration of the idea of creating steam magnet schools at U Park and Annween, where a majority of the Pearl Creek students will be rezoned. These schools' proximities to UAF and Creamers Field make them excellent candidates for such programs. Next year, U Park is projected to have around 425 students, and Annween is projected to have around 400. These numbers are obviously in flux, but this puts the buildings in the 70% to 75% capacity range, and you probably have better numbers than I do. This means that there are about 300 open seats between the schools, two schools. It would be much better for our community if we could stop fighting over our scarce resources and work together to make our remaining schools better. There are excellent teachers and involved parents at all of our schools. We just haven't all connected yet. Even though the Pearl Creek community is devastated by the loss of their school, I still really hope that we can work together to make excellent educational opportunities together that reach as many of our students as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and I promise I'll get your name right one of these days. Up next, we'll have Ms. Kristin Schup. Good evening, Ms. Schup. If you could please state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Kristin Erin Schup, S C H U P P. Erin is my preferred name. My pronouns are she/her. And I am married to the cute young man on the diocaster, Mr. Burgess. We live on Farmer's Loop. I am also on the diversity committee where we recently developed a resolution against bullying. My opinions are my own. I had Mr. Ken Cole the first semester of my freshman year at West Valley in 1993 for health class. He was a tall, dark-skinned black man with silvery hairs threading through his dreads, broad shoulders and chest with a slender waist, and biceps the size of bowling balls. And when those muscles, those arms were crossed with those muscles popping out, he could be quite intimidating. But he also radiated love and compassion with his twinkling eyes, brilliant smile, and joyous laugh. And I don't know that I remember anything that I learned from that health class, other than I'm fairly certain that every other word out of Mr. Cole's mouth was respect. Respect each other and respect yourself. I later had Mr. Cole for a PE class where we did gymnastics, and where this is where his heart really sang. I remember him playing scat music and bopping. I remember he had us learn to do flips. And while I did not like the idea of my feet flying over my head, I trusted him completely to keep me safe as I executed those flips. In 1997, he also became West Valley's football coach. He was very protective of his kids, as he referred to his students. He cared deeply. His message of respect stuck with me, resonating, marinating. When I was 19, I got the word "respect" tattooed on my back. Nothing big or fancy, just a plain message. Because I believe it is what could make the world go round. It's been my navigational tool to help me locate my compassion in tough situations. There are just so many possibilities of how amazing our world could be if humanity embraced a deep, mutual respect and dignity for each other and the environment that nourishes us. I wish that I had been able to tell Mr. Cole about how he impacted me. Unfortunately, last year, when I looked into finding out where he was, I learned that his time had passed from this earth in 2022. But I also found that he had gone on to be Kodiak High School's first football coach and continued to have an impact on kids' lives. I want to honor him and honor his message by trying to remember every day in as many moments as possible about how our words and actions ripple across the universe and can either break or make another life, another community. It's been a pretty tough year. Lots of drama, lots of loss, lots of feelings. The world is a pretty challenging place to be in right now, but I think that if we take the time to sit still with our feelings and the feelings of others, feel the sadness and grief and anger and rage, the worry and the trepidation, and then sprinkle in the laughter and the joys and the relief, we can transmute it all and come to a place of understanding for a path forward together in community, accepting what we need to do to benefit all, respecting yourself, respecting each other.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Up next, we'll have Ms. Emily Soussa. Good evening, Ms. Soussa. If you could please state your names, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Emily Soussa, S O U S A. Um, I'm here tonight to ask you to engage in good faith with the Pearl Creek Charter School. We are where we are because the wrong question was asked. Asking what schools should we close asked our community to choose between each other and to choose between our kids. What we should have asked was, what does a thriving and equitable education in Fairbanks look like? How do we ensure neighborhood schools succeed in the long term, given current challenges? The good news is we can still ask those questions. We can still innovate and collaborate, but only if we actively and humbly engage on a human-to-human level. We are living in times of great political upheaval and challenges. The only way forward is through investment in our communities, neighborhood by neighborhood, relationship by relationship. To say in these times that the way forward is to tear apart longstanding relationships, strip neighborhood of fundamental services, and break trust is the opposite of what we should be doing. Great challenges are calls for innovation, to create, collaborate, and dream big. You've already said it, we've cut everywhere we can. When there is nothing left to cut, what is your plan? How will you look to the future? I have a daughter in elementary school at the moment, and I'm due to have a baby in the next few weeks, which means my family will be engaging with the public school system for the next 18 years, and that is the minimum timeframe we need to be thinking about. We cannot shape our future if we operate on a reactionary defense every year. Budget fluctuations are temporary. Our kids are long-term. Our community is long-term. Our investment and our willingness to take risks and to try new things also needs to be long-term. Equity means ensuring neighborhoods have quality public schools. Closing Two Rivers, Pearl Creek, Midnight Sun, Nordale, Isles and Joy, and Halving Salcha hasn't solved the budget crisis, nor has it increased equity. What it has done is commit to a failing Fairbanks, encouraged outmigration, and disadvantaged neighborhood school kids at the expense of those with the privilege to homeschool. Repurposing beloved school buildings for best homeschool sites harms families, sows distrust, and tells neighborhood schools that they are not as worthy. All our kids are worthy. And it is our job as a community and your job as a school board to ensure that every kid has a quality public school in their neighborhood. I have been in many of the Fairbanks schools as a guest scientist. They are wonderful schools filled with phenomenal staff and educators and kids. Pearl Creek students deserve the same, a quality public school that reflects the heart and soul of their neighborhood. Opening Pearl Creek Charter would allow us to provide a valuable education to a large and vibrant neighborhood. We cannot cut our way out of this. The only way forward is through innovative and collaborative investment, neighborhood by neighborhood. This never needed to be a fight between schools or families. We can build a better future together. The Pearl Creek Charter is one of many tools in our tool belt toward building a better and more equitable school district, and I hope you take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Konstantin Kruliv. Good evening. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Konstantin Kruliv, K H R U L E V. I'm a resident of Fairbanks, um, the husband of a teacher working in the school district and the father of a second grader attending one of its schools. I would like to thank everyone involved in the work on the school consolidation plan. What a difficult and unappreciated job. I would also like to speak in opposition to the project aiming to create a charter school as a way of saving Pearl Creek Elementary School, which is set to close starting in the 25, 26 school year. Insufficient funding from the state was the factor that forced the district to consider closing schools. On the other hand, this conversation was needed for at least one more reason, declining enrollment. The analysis performed while considering school closures made it clear that even after redistributing students among remaining schools, many of them are still below capacity. In other words, our community does not have enough students to fill all the schools we will have in the 25, 26 school year. We do not need to open another school. We cannot afford to. Moreover, doing so would take resources, including teachers from other students in this district. One could respond to this argument by saying that our community has many students who do not attend public schools, and so a new charter may serve students who are currently homeschooled, and that grant funding will take care of the financial impact on the school district. However, we don't know why parents choose to homeschool, so one may hope to attract these students, but cannot count on them. The same can be said about grant funding. One can hope to get it, but it cannot be relied upon. And when this funding does not come, the school districts will have to pick up the tab. I believe that this effort comes from the commendable desire to do something to improve educational opportunities for students in our community. There are many ways to do this, though. I believe we can achieve a great deal by working within the schools we already have. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Ms. Sarah Lewis. Do we have Sarah Lewis here? Not seeing her. We'll move on. Uh, Mr. Don Larson. Perfect timing. Good evening, Mr. Larson. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Don Larson, L A R S O N. I live in Esther. And I uh, want to talk about innovation and education tonight. I uh, work with a lot of students in high school despite being a UAF professor through the North Star College. And I want to encourage you to keep funding this program, but I also think there's some small changes you can make to innovative education like this, to make it better. I have noticed one of the issues with students is sometimes they have some transportation issues. I think there's something that could be solved there with some basic busing of having kids go to their normal high school and having one bus maybe drive them to UAF. go to their normal high school and having one bus maybe drive them to UAF, or some other transportation that could really help open up that program to more students. One of the things that's really positive about that program, too, is the low requirements to get in. I see a lot of students that aren't on their way to getting a BS or going to grad school or anything like that. I see a lot of students that are on their way to become a CNA or get an associate's degree, and that's impressive. It's opening up college and an amazing resource like UAF to so many students, and that's the innovative education that you guys are doing in this board. Please keep doing that. Keep promoting those programs and keep building that program more. I think there's a lot that can be done there to not just help those high-performing learning students, but the students that just might not be ready for college, get some prepped. For the students that aren't going to college but might need some postgraduate education, such as an associate's, it gets them there, too. That's a really great thing. The more we can open up education to everybody, the better. And we have such a gem of a resource in UAF. We're a strong research institute. We're America's Arctic University with, you know, land grant, sea, space, and green. Very few universities have that. We launch rockets into space. We have the Tulip Field Station. We have all these cool things happening, but we're also in open enrollment, and we allow high school students in there. And I just, I find it so amazing when I have this class with 15- and 16-year-olds next to 55-year-olds, and everybody's learning and getting so much from that. That's the innovative educational solutions that are out there. They're not expensive ones. They're not opening new schools. They're making little dents here and there, and that's all we can really do right now with the point of our budget. You know, we're, we're in a rough space. We're not going to get more money. We don't have the ability in the school district to raise revenue very easily. There's not many levers we have there, but we do have ways to make little dents here and there, and the North Star College is one of those. So please, keep up those amazing innovative things you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Ms. Lindy Larson. Larson. If you could state your names, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Lindy Larson, L-A-R-S-O-N, Esther. I, I just wanted to say I support the board's October deadline for charter schools. I don't think we should be moving it. It's not the best practice to move it. It's the best practice to stick with this deadline. We shouldn't be moving it for special circumstances, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Mr. Ben Leffler. Good evening, Mr. Leffler. If you could state your names, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Yep, Ben Leffler, L-O-E-F-F-L-E-R. Trying not to belabor any points others have made. So first, for those concerned that the proposed charter would come at the expense of other schools and students, please take the time to read our application and our financial impacts analysis. Ask yourself what other effect, what other effort is on the table to bring 100 families back to the district, and why over 90% of the teachers at Pearl Creek signed up to teach at the charter. This is not about taking from others. It's about reversing a downward trend in public education in Alaska. It's about being responsive to a community's needs, desires, and ideas. In a letter from the district's attorney, the charter group's efforts to seek engagement with the district were referred to as "the tail wagging the dog." I contend this is a poor attitude for a public institution to view mobilized and engaged constituents. We need to make a way for ideas to be evaluated and challenged. When we questioned the financial assumptions upon which key decisions were being made, we were simply dismissed. Top-down decision-making will never work in a small, engaged town like Fairbanks. Reasonable people can disagree about the proposed merits and shortcomings of charter schools. The issue at hand these past months is that this disagreement has not resulted in any dialogue. The district has the power here. All we can do is talk at you in public testimony and make requests for meetings. If the district had sat down with the charter group back in February, I guarantee we would be in a better place today, perhaps even one where we had all resolved that a charter could or should not open in 2025. With regard to the deadline and waiving policy, I agree with Ms. Maple that the board can and often should say things in public discussion that are non-binding, but I do think it's bad manners to make strong statements in one direction and then reverse course without substantiated justification. To be honest, it feels a bit like Charlie Brown trying to kick the football. I also think this makes it all the more important that a denial of the application be done formally and with rigor. With respect to the statute, I think it's clear that 1403, 250, Part B is included as a guardrail on Part A. There has been a straw man argument that Part B alone would enable a charter application on a truly unreasonable timeline, 61 days before the start of a school year, and thus, Part B can simply be ignored. However, the reciprocal straw man is that Part A alone would enable a district to require applications to be submitted, say, seven years before the intended start date. These parts combine to create a space for due process that respects local autonomy. As the commissioner stated, the district can deny a charter application based on it not complying with policy. Finally, from the time I arrived in Fairbanks almost 10 years ago, I was struck often by the kindness of people here, the genuine questions from the cashier at the grocery store, the fact that every car stopped to help if someone ended up in a snowbank. What a great place to raise a family and build a life. Can we tap into that small-town kindness to find a path forward on this topic? Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Katie Spelman. Good evening, Ms. Spelman. If you could state your names, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Katie Spelman, S-P-E-L-L-M-A-N. I'm from Fairbanks, grew up here. Hi, damn. I have been involved in this movement to create a community school with a STEM, a STEAM focus, and like Beth, I wish that the magnet idea had been pursued. You know, you encouraged us to get the 100 signatures of families from out of district that would enroll in a magnet, and we did that, and it was very exciting. And actually, with all of the press and controversy over this, we're seeing more and more families interested in enrolling in a STEAM school. Fairbanks, I am more and more convinced that Fairbanks needs this sort of innovation and hope, like Emily said, and like Beth said, with, to me, it is part of a solution. What I am left wondering, I'm going to kind of act like my mom, who has testified often here. When I, when I do something that she knows probably wasn't right, and she starts asking these open-ended questions, I'm going to, I'm going to ask an open-ended question here. Why have you not followed the very clear guidance from the commissioner? Why have you not followed the very clear guidance from the commissioner? When we got legal counsel from, early on in our process, they reviewed the language of the policy and state law, and they indicated that the state law takes precedence over the policy. And Deana Bishop reiterated that in her two letters to you, especially in our scenario where we clearly could not submit an application by October since you told us that we would be closed in February. The lawyers you also hired advised in the letter they sent that the district should hear and vote on the charter within the 60-day deadline. You know, my mom would say, why did you, why did you not respond? Why did you ignore all these important directives from people and lawyers and the commissioner herself? Why would you ignore that? Especially while we're seeing steadily increasing interest in this STEAM school in Fairbanks through all of this controversy. And with my 39 seconds, I just wanted to address some of the concerns about equity that have been brought up by other testimonies. Luckily for this district, many of the members of the STEAM school APC have expertise in evidence-based design for equity and diversity in education spaces. We, in the plan, if you read it carefully, there's a weighted lottery for migrant education students and for Title I students. There's transportation planning as a part of this, and those are two of our greatest equalizers, transportation and open enrollment.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Ms. Gwen Jackson. Good evening, Ms. Jackson. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Gwen Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N. I live in Fairbanks. Yesterday, someone asked why anyone would continue to give testimony at the school board meetings when it doesn't seem to make a difference, and then referenced the popular definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over, expecting something different. My answer was because if the voices of the community stop speaking up to those making decisions on behalf of the community, then things that need to stay in the light get swept under the rug and slowly fade away. I would also add that if diverse opinions and voices are not consistently heard on every subject, then it is difficult for our hired and elected public positions to not end up in a vacuum. Nothing good ever happens in a vacuum. My testimony tonight is intended for the people you refer to as the listening public. I also refer to them as neighbors, community members, coworkers, local business owners, and the people who have hired you, district administration, and voted you, school board, to do a specific job for us. We hired you and voted you into the positions and roles that you have for the sole purpose of providing the community a service. That service is education. Without us requiring the service and then hiring you to provide it, you wouldn't have a job. Your role would be unnecessary. You work for our neighbors and community members, urban and rural. I would like to say a few things for the benefit of their listening ears. Some of you are very familiar with everything that's occurred in the last several years. Some of you may not be and are recently checking in. Whichever camp you fall in, that's okay. I'm glad we are present. I am glad we are talking. I'm glad we're asking questions. We cannot learn if we do not ask questions. We cannot create the best solutions if we do not ask questions. I hope we are asking questions of one another motivated by a true desire to understand where the other person is coming from, even if we ultimately end up not agreeing with one another. I am concerned at the anger and division that exists because there is a large group of people asking questions to better understand something, to check if their own work and ideas are accurate or if they need adjusting. People are angry that members of our community are asking questions about the information and data that go into making decisions. I am genuinely concerned about our community relationships, and at the same time, I am genuinely concerned that asking questions of people we have placed an authority over our children has become a big no-no, something to shun someone over, something to try to shut down. That does not sound like a democracy at all. My greatest concern at this point is not whether or not a charter school will open, it's that the checks and balances put in place to make sure our hired and elected positions or doing the work we have hired them to do are being shunned. District administration have made claims that have led to intense fear in some listeners, and when those claims haven't quite lined up with other data, some have asked questions, some have asked for meetings for clarification, some have utilized their legal right and submitted requests for copies of records of data and facts. Those requests have been denied. That is a great concern. The state law does tell the school district to have a procedure for reviewing applications. It also tells them to do a decision or issue a decision within 60 days. Both of those are laws, not either-or. The school board decided not to follow the second law, and that is a great concern.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Doug Crevenston. Is there a Doug here? Not seeing him. Okay, then we will move on to Ms. April Smith. Good evening, Ms. Smith. If you could state your names, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name is April Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I live in North Pole. I wasn't sure what I was going to testify about tonight, so my testimony is a little chaotic. I do have two points that I'd like to speak about. The first is to inform you, if you are unaware, that the administration changed the access to the library catalog, restricting it from the general public. I'd like to warn you that this action speaks volumes to parents and community members about the agenda of the school district and therefore the board. It communicates to us all, your stakeholders, that you have something to hide, that transparency is not a value you hold in high esteem. I'm telling you this publicly so that none of you can say that you are unaware of the administration's decisions and behaviors. Now, I would also say that this action does nothing other than create animosity and remove transparency. Any parent can just join the cause of a group like Moms for Liberty, or take it up themselves and look up the books and still do whatever you're trying to prevent them from doing. So, way to ruin your reputation for no good reason and undermine trust in public education. The second issue, since I'm just here listening to all this Pearl Creek jazz, having served on this board, I understand what's happening here. I really do. I know that you've taken an oath to provide an equitable education to all students in the district, and that you really feel the burden of flooding our district with another charter school that can diminish resources available to the most vulnerable children. I know you did ask, how can we create a thriving and equitable public education, just like a testifier said? I know that you all asked that question when you evaluated what schools to close. It's not either-or. That's the question that was being asked when you decided to close schools, and closing schools was the answer, and I actually thank you for that. I know the burden and weight that you feel, even though it's not mine anymore. And I also wanted to say to some of the testifiers here that trashing allowing homeschoolers who are choosing alternative education to have access to the same things that all other students have is not taking from your students any more than opening a charter school is. And it actually, increasing homeschool students in the district more benefits. I have a whole bunch of other testimony, but Pearl Creek Charter do not count on your transportation plan. Discovery Peak has a transportation plan in their charter and has been denied transportation for many years. And also, at this time, I'm encouraging you all to hear the application, for goodness' sake. Hear it, deny it, let it run the process, stop creating distrust, get some transparency, and answer the FOIA. I did not know that was happening. This community deserves formal denial so the process can run its course.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we'll have Arena Marillo Heron. Think she's on Zoom? No. Arena, are you in the building? Room? Not seeing her? All right, we'll move on, and up next, we'll have Danette Peterson. Good evening, Ms. Peterson. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Danette Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N. I live in Fairbanks in the UAF area. I sent you my testimony tonight because I was so far deep in the list, I didn't think I'd have a chance to testify, so I will do my best to make it short. As the FEA president, I have made it a priority to attend the Joint Healthcare Committee meetings, even though I am not one of the voting members. Bringing healthcare to your attention because it is a crucial issue for our district and all of our employees. I attend these Joint Healthcare Committee meetings because the issue of healthcare is intrinsically tied to the strength of our district and our ability to retain and recruit employees. In the past, being self-insured made sense for us, but lately, that does not seem to be the case, as evidenced by the shocking spike in premiums. The cost of our insurance and the volatility of the premium increases are making it harder for us to recruit and retain staff and to afford our medical care. I believe Ms. Doolian spoke to this at the last board meeting. The increases that we have experienced have dramatically exceeded the minor and stable increases that were predicted. The premium increases recently experienced by our self-insured plans significantly exceed national market trends. Couple this with high deductibles that many never even reach, they feel like they are paying a lot and getting little or nothing in return. And in my email to you, I sent some of the comments that had been shared with me. Despite the various memorandum of agreements that have been signed between the associations and the district two years ago when we entered into our negotiated agreement, and then September 14th of last year when we set new premiums, we have not been able to fully address healthcare. It has been frustrating to hear at Joint Healthcare Committee meetings that the issue can be resolved in bargaining, and then we get to the bargaining table and we're told that the issue should be resolved by the Joint Healthcare Committee. This issue can no longer be ping-pong back and forth in such a catch-22 or pushed aside to later dates. The difficult work of exploring alternatives to our current self-insured healthcare needs to be completed, with all parties fully engaged and committed to the process of providing the best health coverage we can for all district employees. The process cannot be stalled further waiting for negotiations. It is with earnest that the district and the associations must be fully committed to exploring alternative healthcare options. I seek your support and help in lifting the issue of healthcare to the top of the district's priority list.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you.
That brings us to our one-hour time limit and the end of our sign-up list. That brings us to our one-hour time limit and the end of our sign-up list. And so with that, the board will take a brief 10-minute recess, and then we will get into our agenda. All right, the board is back from recess, and we will jump back into our agenda. Up next, we will have the Borough Assembly Report. Ms. Mindy O'Neill, the Borough Presiding Officer, will provide the Borough Assembly Report. Good evening, Ms. O'Neill.
Good evening, Madam President and school board members. Getting a little more familiar up here. You guys kind of intimidate me a little bit when I come up here, so this is my second or third time I've been getting a little more comfortable. So, thanks for having us, and thank you for the cake that was shared. I wanted to report on the assembly that we did complete our budget. We were able to, we managed to cut about $30 million from the mayor's budget. About 300 and a little bit, 300 and change went to the Community Services Patrol or the Emergency Services Patrol. That goes directly to the city. And the rest of that, 2.7 million, was saved for education funding. So, everything that we did cut from our budget, we reinvested back into the school district. And we recognize that without state funding, there's still a very large hole to fill. And we hope that what we did was meaningful, that it is able to be used judiciously, and it helps with all those really hard decisions that you have to make with a shortage of funding and a lack of support from the state. Unfortunately, in our work session, we had voted to close Mary Cy, and this has been a recurring conversation for our community. That came up again. It came up in a work session on a Saturday and took the community by quite a surprise, as you can imagine. That decision was reversed in our final budget. However, the assembly did vote to close Joy, Joy Community Center instead, and that would be effective June 30th. Currently, there is an ordinance before the assembly to keep that open until the end of the year, so we are able to fulfill the contracts that we had and some of the events that we had planned over the summer, as well as the services that are, that are being held in that facility and the user groups that really rely on that facility. So, there is an opportunity for the assembly to postpone that closing for about six months. Just as far as the budget is concerned, we, this is really a community-based budget. We listened to the community, we responded to public feedback, and we were able to make the cuts that we did, which were difficult, as you all know. And we did that with an eye on reinvesting that into the school district. So, there's, we have, looking forward, a couple of very large meetings. Lots of activity is happening at the assembly, and we have a couple of breaks for the summer in June, and so that starts to kind of back up our agendas a little bit. So, if you're paying attention to what's on our agenda, they will get a little bit large the next couple of meetings, but nothing we can't handle. We'll try to get out of there before 11:30. So, I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
Well, first, I want to say I wish you luck in getting out of there before 2:00 a.m. That's a thing. Is there any questions for Ms. O'Neill from the board? Mr. Doran.
Thank you for being here, and thank you to you and the assembly and the mayor for the contribution, the somewhat unexpected contribution to public education, but very, very welcome, and will put to good use for kids. You mentioned there are several large meetings kind of coming. Are they large in significant topics, or is it just that there's a lot on the agenda that way?
More so that there's a lot on the agenda, yeah. There's something that pops out that's really controversial or really a big issue. It's just that there's a lot of activity from the assembly currently.
Great, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you, thanks to you and the rest of the assembly who voted for the increase to education funding. I was there for that vote, or I was there for the beginning of the meeting, not for the vote. And I was kicking myself for having left the highest before you got to the meat of that. But I really do appreciate the commitment to public education. I do have a question related to that funding, and is that something that you would expect to be, that the assembly would be able to provide in the future as well, to maintain that funding level for the district?
That's a really hard question to answer based on a lot of different factors, property taxes being one of them, and our revenues and our state allocations as well. I would say probably not, but it really depends on the priorities of the assembly, and it depends on the financial situation of the assembly. I think it's really hard to predict whether or not that would be something that would continue, but I hope so.
Fair enough, thank you.
And back to Mr. Doran.
Just a question about the Joy Community Center, and I know a lot of conversation around it, part of which was talking about a plan for the future, whether it closed or not, but that plan for the future. I know there are groups in town that are interested in leasing. So I know there are groups in town that are interested in leasing areas of it in the future. Some of that was, came up with the assembly meetings. Could you, to the extent that you can, comment on where that idea of a plan for the future and what its availability as a building might be even if it's closed, stays closed as a community center?
Yeah, I, I think that what we're trying to do here is some due process, I think, to the community and to the user groups of, of the Joy Community Center. You know, it's a borough facility, so it is a public facility, it's all of ours. And so it was really a shock to just say that we were closing it down in, what, like sixty days? There's a lot of plans and ideas out there. I don't know if, really that's in the administration's court of working with other user groups or deciding how that, that facility is used. The discussion at the assembly has been to sell the building. I'm unaware if there's somebody who's interested in buying that. But the ordinance before us really directs the assembly, or I'm sorry, directs the administration to come up with a way that we can give due process to the public about a public facility that's well-used in our community. So I'd say more to come.
Just follow up and just to say again, thank you to the, the borough. I think in terms of using the Joy Community Center, I know it went into pretty immediate use once it was turned over to the borough for the library while the, Noel Wing was undergoing its renovations. But the continued use of it for serving the community on a broad basis, so.
Yeah, I think I can just empathize with the, the school board a little bit about closing public facilities. It's not something that we want to see, it's very difficult for our community, for our students, for our users. And I think the best that we can do is have a public dialogue about where we're going in this community and how we're going to use our facilities to the best way that we can to serve our public.
I don't disagree. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none at this time, Ms. O'Neil, thank you once again and thank you to you in the borough, as other board members have stated, for that, definitely that two point seven extra was a big surprise to us and we will put it to good use, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for your advocacy for that and for your dedication to our community. See you next time.
See you next time. Moving on into our agenda, we'll go on to our advisory member reports and comments. Mr. Wade?
So I'll have more to report in about sixty-some days. But right now, I'm working with the fellow Board of Education reps around the state of Alaska to develop a program for all current, future, and past Board of Education reps to get together to further our goals and to have sort of a further dialogue on a more statewide basis. And then additionally, I'm working with the high schools in our district as well as the Delta Junction area to plan a conference for all high schoolers in the state of Alaska coming this October. This conference, known as AASOG, engages students with their civic duty and political and community representation. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Mr. Dorn, you have a question for Mr. Wade?
Yes, congratulations on having it in your term to host AASOG. I know all the details that go into that from our own daughter's experiences. But do, have you identified the school in our region that's going to host it?
We got notice that we were the ones who were asked to host it as a region to have an individual school about two, three weeks ago. So we put more dialogue into it within the past week and we were deciding on either the convention center, downtown, or Lathrop for a hosting center.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wade? Seeing none, we will go down here to our colonels and we will start with Colonel Foster. I threw you free loop.
Yes, you did. So just a couple of things from the Iowasun perspective. We are getting into our busy season, the summer where we start to have some of our major high-end exercises with Red Flag Alaska. So that'll kick off next week, but you'll start to see some units that'll come in from the Republic of Korea, Air Force. The Japanese will also be here as well as the Belgians. So we'll be hosting them as they come in and get some of the most premier air-to-air combat training on the planet. So that'll take place starting in about a week and week and a half. With that, we also have a lot of our senior leaders at Iowasun that will be changing over to include Colonel Towns and the Wing Commander. His change of command will actually be to July, we'll have Colonel Johnston coming in from Luke Air Force Base out in Phoenix, Arizona. So a busy time for us, just, just the start of the summer. So we'll pretty much go full speed ahead all the way through August when we start back up with schools. So just perfect, busy, busy, busy. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Foster. Colonel Cole?
Yeah, to echo what Colonel Foster said, you know, the summer timeframe is a little bit busy, but mainly for us is going to other countries to participate in exercises with our allies and partners. But that's not what I wanted to highlight for the board. You know, I'm a visual representation, this being my last meeting of our summer permanent change of station cycle. So roughly about ten percent of the population, you know, every summer will rotate out. They'll either leave and, and new families will come in. So next school year, you'll see obviously new faces in our schools, you know, for the Fort Wainwright population. And our school liaison officers, which, which come to each of the board meetings, you know, supporting Colonel Foster and I. You know, they're diligently working with inbound families as well as outbound families, linking them in with the school district specifically Ms. Georgia Sangrin, you know, to help transfer school records, talk to them about the school options that they have in the area, whether they be homeschool or charter schools or even North Star College, you know, for the family members that are coming in just to better understand the environment for their children. So big, busy season this summer for us, but mostly with receiving new families into the area and putting them on, on a solid footing. And I thank the school administration with working with our school liaison officers for that. And I'm excited for the next school year with this board and where we're actually going with it. So thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Colonel Cole. Mr. Dorn, question?
Okay, thank you. Actually, perhaps to, to both colonels if it applies. But Colonel Cole, you talked about the rotation, which is a normal part of life in the military and for Fairbanks to experience. Sense of, I'm thinking particularly students coming, families coming. I know that's not something you can even look at a cloudy crystal ball to, because each thing. But do we have any sense of how that might impact at this point or?
I don't, but my gut would say with what I'm hearing, because I also work with the housing on the installation. Larger families are coming in for some reason this summer. Like we're running out of five and four-bedroom homes for the amount of, the, the size of the families coming in. But I will go back to what I have said at least maybe once or twice in my two years. Military families love the homeschool option because of the disruption of moving your families. That is one less thing that a lot of military families put a little bit of sanity in something that they can control in their lives, that they actually have more of a voice in. So while it looks like I have larger families rotating in than what we have for the last two years that I've been here, what I can't say is how many of those families will be our homeschool and want to stay on the homeschool route. But I will say, from what I've been seeing, I've got larger families moving in. So hopefully we can convince them to come into the school district, so, but that's all I've got, Mr. Dorn.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Seeing none at this time, we will move on. And next up in our agenda will be board committee reports. Do we have any committee reports from board members? Seeing none, we will move on to the president's report. And, all right, let's see. Forgive me, my eyes are old. All right, here we are at our last scheduled regular meeting of the year. And I just want to start by thanking each of you on this board. This has been a long, challenging year, especially when it came to the budget and I appreciate the time, effort, and heart that you have all put into the work. The missed family time, the missed events, the missed sleep, and the missed work. You have all done phenomenally. Looking back, I know there are things we might wish we had done differently. Hindsight always brings those moments into focus. But I also know this board showed up, stayed engaged, and did the best we could with the information and tools we have had. And that matters. A big thank you as well to our administration. Your guidance and support helped us navigate some really difficult decisions and we're very grateful for your steady hand throughout it all. That said, we're still facing tremendous uncertainty with the possibility of a line item veto looming over our budget. We hope that the governor has heard our calls and that he has heard our frustrations that has been expressed by not only us but by our community and across the state. We're staying hopeful that if the seven hundred BSA increase survives his red pen, we may have a path to restore some of the add-backs that were so important to our schools, our staff, and our students. Please remember that it's not too late to reach out to the governor's office and encourage him to keep the seven hundred dollar increase in our BSA. It is needed and Fairbanks has done the work. Thank you again to our community for sticking through it all. Thank you to the board for sticking through it all. It's been a seriously heavy lift, but one that we've carried together and I am proud to sit on this board with each and every one of you. Thank you. And that will move us into our superintendent's report. Dr. Minor, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, President Burnett. I'd like to start by thanking Colonel Cole for his time on the board and his service to our community. I've been very impressed, as other board members have noted, about his willingness to engage in debate and offer guidance, not only from a military perspective, but his perspective having seen educational systems work around the country. You've certainly overseen some huge changes during your time at Fort Wainwright. I remember hearing your chamber presentation, that was very well done. And some significant moves have happened under your watch at Fort, Fort Wainwright that I think you should be really proud of. The Aquatics Center opening, the Gaming Center, the, I think you redid the Bowling Alley. And all of these things help our military-connected families stay grounded here in Fairbanks and have something to look forward to and, and especially since many of them are not used to the cold weather and, and the dark. And so I think you've left a tremendous legacy at Fort, Fort Wainwright and the work that you've done and all with an amazing sense of humility. That's one of my favorite attributes that you show, you're an amazing leader. Not only given the title that you have, but the, just the way that you present yourself day in and day out is super impressive. So thank you for not only your service here on this board, but service to the community. I'm going to shift to an activities update. Lots of state competitions happening and a lot of our student athletes engaging at the state level. So congratulations to the West Valley High School Boys Soccer Team for their second-place finish in state and for their D-one academic award. It's impressive to see how well the boys played throughout the state competition and even more impressive their success in the classroom. Congratulations to Izzy Kaiser from North Pole High for her first-place finish in the triple jump at the state track and field competition. Our West Valley High School Girls Track and Field Team won the state sportsmanship award. Congratulations to North Pole Baseball Team that will be representing our district in the D-two baseball stamp, state championship tournament upcoming. And we also had several boys and girl players earn railboat, rail belt all-conference honors and a full list of that can be found in today's News-Miner article. So I encourage you to go read that. Lots of boys and girls played very well this season and made that all-rail-belt all-conference honors. The board will be meeting next week on June ninth for a work session to begin preparations for adopting an approved budget. The board will discuss a variety of scenarios based on both the additional funding that we received from the Borough Assembly, but also going over scenarios with the potential threat of a veto to the educational appropriations by Governor Dunleavy. As mentioned in last meeting's report, for every fifty dollar, fifty dollars the governor cuts of the BSA, that's over one point one million dollars worth of revenue that the district would lose. And so the board will need to look at potential scenarios depending on how heavy the governor's veto pin is with that line item appropriation veto. We're hopeful that the governor signs off on the seven hundred dollar BSA that was overwhelmingly passed on a bipartisan nature from our legislators. But the board will work through different scenarios in preparation for their approved budget. The governor has until June nineteenth to work through that budget, so more certainty will come after that date and then the board will work through a special meeting to pass an approved budget. I did want to close out my final superintendent report of the year with a celebration of tremendous growth we have experienced this year despite ongoing funding challenges for the district. My theme for this year was consistent growth, endless potential, with three main goals of improving literacy, ensuring all students grow in their academic endeavors, and family engagement. I recently shared some of the sub-goal data with the board and community in a recent report. But now that we have end-of-year data, I will share some of that. I want to thank our Assistant Superintendents Kate LaPlante and Sarah Gillum and our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Chain Beam and our Senior Data Analyst Ellis Ah for crunching these data for me to share tonight. And then, of course, a huge thank you to our principals and all of the educators actually doing the work in the classroom in our schools day in and day out. We know that we continue to ask a lot of you and providing support for all of our students and ensuring that they're successful and you're doing a tremendous job and that's showing with this continuous growth that we're seeing over the last couple of school years. On the goal for literacy, from spring twenty twenty-four to spring twenty twenty-five, this is a different view than we've been able to look at in the past because of the first year of M-class last year. The district demonstrated significant and steady growth in reading achievement, particularly evident in the M-class assessment and the MAP assessments. The results from the spring twenty twenty-five M-class assessment revealed that sixty-six percent of K-three students reached proficiency in reading, which is an improvement from the sixty-three percent proficiency observed in the previous year's spring twenty twenty-four assessment. And I want to remind the board that we saw huge growth and we continue to see huge growth from fall to spring. But the spring to spring is awesome to see, so that's great. We had set a two percent goal, so actually as a district, we surpassed that goal, which is great. At the, I've talked a lot this year about growth and oftentimes people are like, well, two percent isn't very much. But when you think of two percent compounded over five, ten years, that adds up to a lot. And so we want to continue to see that consistent growth and it was great to see that we overachieved on the goal that we had set this year. The results from the spring twenty twenty-five MAP assessment, that's for our third through ninth grade students, revealed that sixty percent of those students reached proficient proficiency in reading and improvement from the fifty-seven percent proficiency observed in the previous year's spring twenty twenty-four assessment. So also a three percent growth for MAP. So three percent growth in MAP and a three percent growth in M-class. This upward trend on both assessments highlights the effectiveness of implemented educational strategies and indicates a positive trajectory in student literacy development across the district. In our growth for all goal, a review of the district data revealed, going into the school year, we wanted to focus on our Alaska Native students and our special education students. Many of our Alaska Native students coming into the year fell well below or below proficient ranges. During the MAP assessments for this year, we improved one percent for our Alaska Native students, so didn't quite reach the two percent goal that we had there, but did show growth. so didn't quite reach the 2% goal that we had there, but did show growth. And then what I would like to point out, we saw a notable decrease in students classified as well proficiency. So we didn't get to that 2% growth in students reaching proficiency, but saw a lot of movement in students moving out of a well-below proficiency, which is a great start to that trajectory. For special education students, district-wide MAP proficiency remained pretty steady at 26% from fall 24 to 2020, Spring 2025. So we fell short on that goal for our special education students. While some schools did report individual growth, broader gains were not reflected district-wide, so we'll continue to take a look at what we need to do there. But did want to know, anecdotally, more elementary students are exiting IEPs after meeting their reading goals. And so it's important to note that those data sets would not show up for our special education students in elementary. And so I think we're doing some great work there with our struggling readers, and it's great to see students exiting special education for reading needs. The final 2025 graduation rates are still pending as CEC intercession and summer credit recovery efforts continue through June. And so as those programs finish, finish this summer, we'll have final rates calculated, and those will be available to the board and the community in August. And finally, under that Growth for All target, algebra enrollment and achievement improved notably this year. I shared in past reports that first semester passing rates rose by over 10% from the previous year, which is outstanding. Second semester passing rates improved by 3%, and that means over 70 more students passed algebra this year than the previous year, which we know algebra can be a gatekeeper to other math options and elective options within schools. So that's huge when you break it down into a per-student number. In the Family Engagement Goal, the number of parents, guardians, and students who are contactable with ParentSquare was increased to 99% as a district, so we had a goal of 100%. We're so close. And ParentSquare, I'll say, is very impressed with our district for having that contactable rate. They have stressed over and over again that that is not normal for a district coming on with their product line to be able to contact that many parents and families with their platform. And, you know, that's something that we worked hard on as a school district this year to ensure that we have updated contact information for our families that goes into Power School, ParentSquare, and our other data sets. One of the huge ways that parents can engage in their students' learning is by receiving, you know, the communications that we put out as a district, but then also engaging back via ParentSquare. And so that was something that we worked hard on this year. The data on final attendance rates is still under review for middle and high schools. Dr. Ah is working tirelessly to try to get that to me, but couldn't quite make it for the meeting tonight. The data is complicated by multiple factors, including partial attendance, partially attending students and the number of classes per day. But he did share for elementary schools, we did see a 2% increase in regular attendance for our elementary schools, ending the year with 67% of students attending 90% of the school year or more. So hit that 2% goal for our elementary schools, which is excellent, and hoping that we see that similar result for our middle and high schools. In closing, I know I talk a lot about data in these meetings because that's quantifiable for people. People like to see the metrics. But we know, I just want to say this, we know kids are much more than test scores, test scores or improvement data. They're unique individuals with their own strengths, challenges, and dreams. When we talk about data, it's not because that's all we see or we're focused on the numbers. It's because we understand that growth and learning can lead to real lasting benefits for students, their futures, and even for their future generations. The numbers matter, but only because they help us see where we can do better in supporting every student's success. And so we continue to be highly focused on continuing to ensure that we look at the data, and if there's areas that we need improvement on, that we critically look at that and target that for focused improvement in the future. So that'll end my report for this evening and happy to answer any questions for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Glad to hear about the algebra. I know when they started throwing letters into things for me, I started going, really? So it's really great to see that things are changing and students are achieving some good scores in algebra. With that, Mrs. Dullian.
Thank you. I do, I have a, I have one comment and then, and then also a question. But I want to also thank Dr. Ah for all the work that he does in, in providing this data. I love it so much. And one of the things that I wanted to just state when I was looking at the, the data, school by school, was I was so impressed with our ability to look at growth. And so when you have a continuum, and this is what I always like to kind of like, you know, you look at the continuum, and if you have somebody that starts here, that moves to here, well, that's great, they're moving. But what I love to see is when you have somebody kind of starting over here, and they go all the way over here. And let me tell you, the data from Weller Elementary blew my mind. They are moving kids, I think more than almost any other school in our district, in that growth continuum. And so, you know, I hope that the administration, that we might be able to look school by school and say, what are those things that different schools are doing that we might be able to expand to others? It's a similar thing that we asked all of the charter schools, what are you doing that's successful there that you could expand to others? And perhaps fold that into professional development. But then, you know, I really wanted to ask, is this performance, these, these increases, this growth, do you feel like it's indicative of the teaching by level, by, by ability? Where, where students are placing them and then kind of having these, these smaller groups, especially when it comes to reading? And would that be, and if so, do you think that it's possible to do that for other subject matters like math?
Yes, great question. So I think specifically to reading, it's a number of factors. I think it's a focus from the state level down through the district on a consistent approach to reading. There's been a tremendous amount of professional development provided from our district and through state organizations to really teach reading. That's something that some of our teachers have come into the classroom, and they were, you know, in conversations I've had with them, they were surprised at what they've learned in a lot of these professional development opportunities that they've been able to put into practice right away in the classroom. And then I do think it's because of multiple different intervention strategies at the school that we haven't done in the past that are leading to great successes in our schools. And just a tremendous amount of work from our educators in the classroom has gone into literacy efforts within the past couple of years. Not that they weren't trying very hard before, but with a more focused approach and with intentional interventions and a consistent use of district curriculum, I really do think we're seeing great growth because of that. The question, can this be replicated to math? Yes, I think it can be replicated to math. I don't know that it'll look exactly the same way, because you do start to run out of the time in your day to do, you know, if we want to do a walk to read and a walk to math, or, you know, different intervention strategies. It might look slightly different, but our idea teams, which are educator kind of think tanks groups within the district, we have an elementary idea team and a secondary elementary idea team. They're already starting to look at ways that we can improve our math instruction and ways that we're approaching math, because we do know that that's a huge need within the district and around the state. And, and I imagine at the legislative level that at some point in time, there'll be a math act as well that'll come down through the state, but we're already taking a look at that and already have professional development lined up next year with some math experts coming in to help work with our teachers.
Mr. Doran.
Okay, a couple of things. One, I want to say thank you for the measures of success recap and your work, and Dr. Ahds and others who contributed to putting that together. Really appreciate that. And I was going to save this comment until the end, but I'm going to put it in here. It'll save time later because it fits. As hearing that report, what I've seen in the classrooms, and this is about assessment, and thinking about our conversations around cell phones and screen time and all like that, and following this across the nation. Just to put in the hopper for thought, something to ponder over the summer, is whether our district could pilot a paper versus screen state assessment. There are some indications, again, not conclusive, but where that has been done, where students had a chance to take their tests on paper rather than on, on the computer, that that has actually shown beneficial results, better reflection of what they know, the skills they have. So I'm going to put that in the hopper to think about, and we might be able to lead the state in that regard. The other question that I have is in terms of you, after we accept, we approved the district strategic plan for the next five years. I want to thank you for the letter you sent out. I think it was really well done and captured especially that having that plan, it's a guideline, it's a starting point. And now the big thing is conversations around implementation. And I think it fits with previous conversations we've had, some of the comments tonight, around that question of what would we like Fairbanks schools to look like? What do we want for our kids? And how do we work towards achieving that over the next five years? To, so you've brought up that commitment to conversation. Could you just expound upon it and a little bit, give us a preview?
Yeah, I definitely can.
Add all the details, I know.
Yeah. Thanks for the question, and definitely, there's a lot more work to be done. I love that you paraphrased it, that it's guardrails as a starting point for conversations. You know, what the board did not act on in the plan were initiatives that go under each individual pillar. And a lot of those initiatives will be informed through community conversations. Some initiatives were already created through the steering team, and we're working through those to see if it's a continued fit within the pillars. But a lot more continued conversations to go under each individual pillar of the strategic plan. You called out one of the initiatives that was originally in the strategic plan under access and choice. And that is that call for looking at some of our schools as potential magnet or focus schools, or reimagining some of our schools, or even just advertising a little bit better or marketing what they're already doing in their schools. And so that's something that the steering team felt strongly about, that we take a look at under that access and choice pillar. But there's specific initiatives that fall under each of those pillars that we'll have continued conversations about. This summer, I will assign a pillar lead for each of the pillars, and by distributing that work, that will lead to, I think, greater conversations and the ability to have people run with the, the pillar and build out ideas under each one of those that we would like to see accomplished within the next five years. Once we have those initiatives dialed in, or as we continue to add to them, I think it's really important to acknowledge that strategic plans are living documents, and so just because we don't have something as an initiative next year doesn't mean that we can't add it under one of the pillars going forward in the next five years. We'll have a public facing, facing data dashboard for our initiative successes as well. So we want to ensure that people are tracking what we're working on in conjunction with the strategic plan and how well we're doing that. And so that'll be part of the implementation in the next year or two.
Thank you.
Follow-up?
It's a bridge between both your reports.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Well, related to the strategic plan is I want to say thank you to both President Burnett and Superintendent Minor, too. The idea of considering adjusting our agenda to actually begin with the vision statement in our new strategic plan. It's very focused on students and starts us off with really that arguably it is more important that we have our vision because what we do is for students. The mission is really how, addressing the organization and what we're trying to do to get to that vision. So I hope other board members will be supportive of that, and sure appreciate the positive reception to that idea and keeping our focus on kids. And lastly, partially because, Dr. Martin, you, you mentioned the June 9th meeting, but I know President Burnett, you're well attuned to it. The recent invitation that we got from the Anchorage School District that they sent out to at least the big five districts, I don't know how many others, but at least those five, to invite us to kind of listen in, be part of the conversation. They're having their board retreat on Saturday, and they've invited other district boards to join them via Zoom if they wanted, or if there happen to be in Anchorage, they could go down for that. But I think that they're just reaching out and the big five boards having a chance to make that connection. Some things in common that, and they're getting some information. The Anchorage Ward has arranged for some debriefing about the legislative session and education issues as we go forward. But really appreciate that invitation and appreciate that some of us can join in on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. And in regards, not to hijack Dr. Minor's area, in regards to your request, I really appreciated that you requested to add the vision statement to our agendas. I thought that that was a really great idea, so did Dr. Minor. And as long as the board is not in objection, if you do disagree, you can send me an email. But we will be changing our agendas starting July 1st, so starting in August, our new agendas or agendas in August will start to show the new vision statement for our district. And so start the new school year off with our vision and our mission and our strategic plan. So thank you, Dr. Minor, for your report. Up next, we will move into our action items, and we will begin with our suspend policy. Board Bylaw 9320, types of meetings for 25, 26, school board regular meeting schedule adjustments. Each spring, the school board sets its regular meeting calendar for the following school year. Regular meetings of the board generally take place on the first and third Tuesday of most months when school is in session. Historically, the school board has canceled its second December and first January meetings due to the close proximity to winter break. The administration recommends the board cancel its December 16th, 2025, and January 6th, 2026, regular meetings. The board has always had the ability to call for an additional regular meeting during the year if needed, as we did this past winter. If the board remembers, we reinstated that December meeting to allow for our board business. And so that is something that the board is permitted to do as we have done in the past. Included in your packets, we have our regular school board meeting calendar, which basically states that we have no meetings in July, and then we have our August meeting, which starts the 19th, and then two meetings a month until December and January, where we'll have the one, and then February, March, April, May, where we have our double meetings. And with that, is there any discussion from the board on this topic?
We need a motion.
Oh, can I get a motion on the topic? I apologize.
I move to approve the board's 2025, 2026 regular meeting calendar by suspending policy 264. Types of meetings to cancel the second regular meeting on December 16th, 2025, and January 6th, 2026, regular meetings due to their close proximity to winter break.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on Board Bylaw 9320? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Do we have discussion from the board? Seeing none at this time. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote? A yes vote will accept our calendar, or no vote will knock it down.
Mr. Wade?
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on, we will go into our approval of FY '25 to FY '30 Boreal Sun Charter School contract. Included in the agenda is the proposed FY '25 to FY '30 contract for Boreal Sun Charter School. The administration recommends the charter school contract presented for the next five years be approved. May I get a motion? Miss, go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
Point of clarification in terms of doing the motion. I believe the approval would be the FY '26 to '30. Am I correct on that?
Yep.
Okay, so then I can make the motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
Move to approve the FY '26 to FY '30 charter school contract between the Fairbanks North Starborough School District and Boreal Sun Charter School.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from the board? Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you so much. I'd like to, I'm going to be supporting the motion that's at hand. However, I do have some concerns. And I'll start by saying that, you know, public charters, they operate under a performance contract or the charter. And that outlines the school's mission, academic goals, and performance standards. In the exchange for the autonomy that charter schools have, they're held accountable for achieving these outcomes. And when I look at specifically what's coming from Juno, we are consistently being told that our funding is tied to outcomes, outcomes for reading, outcomes for math. And when I look at Boreal Sun in particular, I'm concerned about the amount of students that are well below proficient, both in math and language arts. I know that there has been, and of course, I'm not able to see right now the outcomes for the current school year. And I know that we've talked and there's been some increases there. So as we look to our charter schools and as the community has a expectation that charter schools are performing better, and that is indicative of test scores and such than our neighborhood schools, when we look at what they are able to receive, which is that autonomy, I'm really concerned about what we can do to support Boreal Sun in particular in improving those scores. And I know that this next year, there's, they're going to be working with Watershed, which is great, on applying a new math curriculum and doing some interventions. But as we look to next year, I'm hopeful that we can get more than just one check-in with Boreal Sun. And perhaps that's two check-ins next year, perhaps it's three check-ins. But I really want to make sure that we are providing the support that they need to improve those outcomes for those students in reading and math.
Thank you, Mrs. Dulean. Any other, oh yeah, Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I also will be supporting the Boreal Sun charter renewal. And I also just wanted to express my concern about the level of proficiency with students in reading and math. And I'm looking forward to seeing some improvement in both of those areas throughout the next year.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none at this time, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the Boreal Sun Charter School contract? A yes vote will accept it, and a no vote will not accept it.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Boreal Sun charter contract has been approved. Moving on to our next one, we'll move into the approval of the FY '26 to FY '30 Chinook-Montessori Charter School contract. Included in the agenda is the proposed FY '26 FY '30 contract for Chinook-Montessori Charter School. The administration recommends the charter school contract presented for the next five years be approved. May I get a motion?
Move to approve the FY '26 to FY '30 charter school contract between the Fairbanks North Starborough School District and Chinook-Montessori Charter School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on Chinook-Montessori? Seeing none at this time, public testimony is now closed. Is there discussion from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Chinook-Montessori has been approved. Up next is the approval of the FY '26 FY '30 Discovery Peak Charter School contract. Included in the agenda is the proposed FY '26 FY '30 contract for Discovery Peak Charter School. The administration recommends the charter school contract presented for the next five years be approved. May I get a motion?
Move to approve the FY '26 FY '30 charter school contract between the Fairbanks North Starborough School District and Discovery Peak Charter School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on Discovery Peak Charter School? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Does the board have any discussion? Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. To be fair, I'll state the same thing that I spoke to a little bit earlier with another one of these motions. So again, public charters, they operate under a performance contract, which is the charter. And that outlines a school's mission, academic goals, and performance standards. In exchange for the autonomy that our charter schools have, they are held accountable for achieving these outcomes. In Juno, we are being told to increase outcomes, outcomes in reading and math. And oftentimes, education funding is held back because they're stating that outcomes aren't what they'd like them to be. When I look at the outcomes in reading and math for Discovery Peak, I'm also very concerned. I'm looking at the 2022 to 2023 school year and the 2023 to 2024 school year and the concerning numbers of students who are well below benchmark in language arts and math. However, with Discovery Peak at our work session, there was a really thorough outline, as well as in their report, about the things that they're doing to intervene and to help support students in those two areas, particularly also in math. And I'm really hopeful that as a school district, we can continue to support them in their growth. I'm really happy that they are partnering with Watershed, who is one of our top performing schools in language arts and math, in adopting the Signapore math and the curriculum that Watershed has. And that they are also working with another charter school in the district, as well as Watershed, in helping to intervene. So I will be supporting the renewal of this contract. But I would like to see maybe more than one check-in next year with Discovery Peak, just to make sure that we are supporting them enough and helping them get their students up on step.
Thank you, Ms. Dulean. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
And I want to just repeat the same thing I just said. I will speak in support of, or I will be supporting Discovery Peak Charter School renewal. However, I was a little alarmed at the, at their level of proficiency in reading and math. And so I am eager to see the results after they do some maneuvering with Watershed and do some changing of their curriculum and see what they can do. And so I wish them all the best.
Mr. Dorn?
I very much support the comments that Ms. Dulean and Ms. Carol Hubbard have shared and those concerns around accountability for each and every one of our schools. But I did want to do just a quick clarification that there are things on accountability that are under the charter, which is, and the points that have been brought forward are extremely important that we keep in mind. It's a 10-year charter granted through the state. These contracts that we're dealing with tonight are, I call them, they're administrative contracts that they were looking at and how some of those logistics of auditing, counting of monies and those types of things are carried out, some of the administrative support that these contracts address. So not taking it away at all from the previous board member comments, I think they're well, very well taken. But just that distinction where we want to have accountability under the charter. And there's also certain accountabilities and working relationships under these contracts. So two different things.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Any other, Dr. Minor?
Sorry, I know you're trying to move us along.
It's okay.
I did just want to say I appreciate board members' comments on looking at achievement rates for charter schools. We often haven't dug in necessarily to achievement rates with them. And I think it's important, as we do consider that 10-year charter piece, that you look at that early, you don't get to that renewal piece, and all of a sudden, you're looking at it and you're like, well, that school's not doing exactly what we would want it to be doing. At that point in time, it's far too late to try to do anything differently to improve student outcomes. And so I think this is a great focus by the board, is looking at this over a period of years and ensuring our charter students are receiving the education that we want them to have. So thank you for the board member comments and looking at this critically as we consider charters in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Any other conversation from the board? Seeing none at this time, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on Discovery Peak Charter School? A yes will accept it and approve it, and no vote will not.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Discovery Peak Charter School application has, or yeah, has been approved. Approval of the, or their contract, sorry. Approval, up next is the approval of the FY '26 FY '30 Effie Cochran Charter School contract. Included in the agenda is a proposed FY '26 FY '30 contract for Effie Cochran Charter School. The administration recommends the charter school contract presented for the next five years be approved. May I get a motion?
Move to approve the FY '26 to FY '30 charter school contract between the Fairbanks North Starborough School District and Effie Cochran Charter School.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will now open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on Effie Cochran? Seeing no testimony, public testimony is now closed. Does the board have any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Dulean?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Effie Cochran charter contract has been approved. Up next is the approval of the FY '26 FY '30 Watershed Charter School contract. Included in the agenda is the proposed FY '26 FY '30 contract for Watershed Charter School. The administration recommends the charter school contract presented for the next five years be approved. May I get a motion?
Move to approve the FY '26 FY '30 charter school contract between the Fairbanks North Starborough School District and Watershed Charter School Incorporated.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will now open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on Watershed Charter School? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Quit laughing in the audience, guys. Does the board have any discussion on Watershed Charter School? Mr. Dorn?
Just want to make an observation this time in terms of, this is our last charter school contract to act on tonight. But I really want to say thank you to the charter school representatives who are present tonight during this. I know it's not a lot of big questions or those types of things, but it's just, your presence is appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Is there any other comments from board members? Mrs. Dulean?
Yes, thank you. I am going to speak in support of this charter contract. One of the things that I, that stood out to me is that there's 198 students that are enrolled right now at Watershed. And there's a tremendous waitlist. And they also are doing tremendous things when it comes to high, high, high achievements in basically everything that they're testing in. So I'm hopeful that the administration might work with Watershed and see if there's an opportunity in the future, at some point, to expand the number of seats that are available at our place-based outdoor education charter school here in Fairbanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dulean. Any other comments? Ms. Carol Hubbard, did you have any? Oh, okay. Seeing none at this time, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Watershed Charter School contract has been approved. Up next is the adoption of our proposed 2627 academic school calendar. The board has a 2627 proposed academic school calendar. The administration supports and recommends the adoption as the 2627 calendar. And Ms. Herbie, you are in front of us, hello.
Good evening. Just one minute getting this up here.
Yep, no worries. Before we call a motion to the floor, we'll allow you to speak to the calendar.
Okay, so we have, this is our academic year 2026-27 draft calendar, so not next year, but the year after. The only real difference in this calendar compared to the revised 2025-26 calendar is that the spring parent-teacher conferences have been moved up a few weeks. They're now the week before the end of the quarter. And if needed, the instructional folks can speak to that a little bit better than I can. But basically, the reasoning is to want to provide an opportunity to, for interventions for students earlier in the semester and give them a chance to make that, parents make that connection with teachers earlier and provide more support to students. Have a bit more time for, to help them out. But essentially, that was the change. Everything else is pretty much the same as the 2025-26 revised. There was a survey that was sent out for feedback from families and staff. I have a summary here that was included with the agenda, that included the language it was sent out. It was open for about two weeks. It was a fairly simple survey, since there wasn't any big changes being proposed with this calendar. It was mainly just the shifting of the October parent-teacher conferences. We had 709 responses, about a pretty bunch of what we normally would see with like our parents split, staff split, about halfway elementary, halfway secondary. The main question of that, people either agreeing or disagreeing or somewhere in the middle about that fall, changing the October parent-teacher conference conferences up. Over 50% liked the change. The 29% were neutral, and then you had about 20% that didn't like it. But a pretty, with strong support for that out of all the respondents. There was some open feedback there that I summarized. And again, this is just a portion of the people that left open comments. The people that had the supportive feedback liked it, there was that chance for, at an earlier conference, to identify and address student needs. earlier conference to identify and address student needs. Mostly what I heard back from the, the non-supportive feedback was some liked that they could go for grades at the later parent-teacher conference, and then just some, some questions about timing, about like the end of the, the quarter and the, and the parent-teacher conferences. But again, the major, the, most of the comments were in support of it. And then there was the option to rank the calendar, and basically you could give it stars, like what do you want to write the calendar at? A five-star would be no changes needed, a zero, one star would be they needed a ton of changes. The average was 3.7, so three would be minor, four would be almost no. So that's a pretty good, in my opinion, and pretty good range for the calendar, where we often see groups of people wanting completely opposing things that were somewhere where most people are okay with the majority of the calendar. That's a pretty good spot to be with academic calendar. There were, just there was an option for open-ended comments at the end, just if anything they wanted to say. Again, a relatively small number compared to the overall respondents. But one thing I did want to point out was often the open-ended comments is a place where you're more going to get constructive feedback, let's say, or maybe more critical feedback. And there was a fairly good number of positive comments liking, really showing appreciation for that tentative makeup day that was built into the school year, that we have built in for this upcoming school calendar as well. So there was positive feedback around that, and then just some, a variety of kind of like minor comments on certain things. But so I just want to give you a brief overview and then open if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Herbie. Is there any preliminary questions before we open it up for public testimony? Ms. Carol Hubbard?
I don't, I guess I don't have a question. I just have a couple of comments.
That's fine.
Okay. I just, I, I think it's a very positive sign that we had 79% of the people surveyed ranked the calendar with three and above. I think that's great. And I also just want to speak in support of the change to the fall parent-teacher conference. I think that is an excellent idea, knowing that the, the students and the teachers will have more time to shift and to focus their instruction and do more targeted instruction is super important. And so the fact that it's earlier just gives them more time, and I think that's a great benefit to the students. So thank you for doing that.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I just also wanted to support the, the shift in parent-teacher conferences in the fall. What really strikes me with it is that a week before the end of the quarter, teachers, my experience with teachers is they know pretty much where things are, are going for a student. But it also means that having a conversation with a parent and the student that week before may really say, you've got a week, get stuff done if you need, or you're going to have to buckle down, or whatever it might be. It, it gives them a chance to still take action, whereas when we do them in November, the report is already done mid-year. So I, I like this placement. I did have a question in the spring ones. One of our considerations is to try and make use of federal holidays like President's Day. We're not doing that in this spring. We're, we didn't do it this year either. Pros and cons, I, you know, over the decades I've heard when, well, if it's a holiday, people want to take advantage of the three-day weekend, so they may not come as readily. Many people don't have it as a holiday anyway, but also those who do, it might make it easier for them to come to their conference. So could you just talk about what our experience has been?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to it, and then Dr. Minor, if you want to chime in if I'm missing the mark on anything, but I, I think that's, if I remember correctly, that was one of the shifts we made, trying to align sort of our professional development and wanting, I believe that was the particular holiday where there was talk of moving, like one of the PD days to like the President's Day, but then there's not the vendors. The vendors are also not working, and so we can't get them. So there was, those are some of the considerations that come into like when we take certain days off, and then also trying just to keep being really cognizant of the, where we're having the breaks, so like knowing when the student instruction is being broken up by days off essentially.
Yeah, I think you nailed it on the moving a professional development day to a holiday. I'll just speak to that, just because that's come up in the past, and that it is nearly impossible to find vendors to help us with professional development opportunities because many of them do recognize certain holidays, and so those employees won't work. In terms of adding another holiday within the calendar, we could certainly do that, just knowing that it has to be offset at one end of the calendar or the other, and expanding the calendar out.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was not clear. I, it wasn't a question about professional development, it was a question about the parent-teacher conferences.
Hmm.
That they're on a Thursday, Friday, instead of taking advantage of President's Day on Monday and doing it on Monday, Tuesday. And over the, the years, we've done it different times.
We did get feedback.
Our experience in terms of not having it on the holiday, and yet it's one of our pieces of appreciation, or I mean, our holiday requests. How, how has it panned out, not having it on the holiday, and why aren't we using it in, in terms of one of those consider, high considerations?
And now that we've had a couple, like we've had calendars now done in both ways. We had the previous history of having the Monday, Tuesdays off, and now we've had, we'll have a couple of years where we've had the Thursday, Friday. It could be a question I ask on the next survey of like, hey, do you guys want to keep it this way now that we've had experienced both, like which do you prefer? Because there was some feedback originally when we made that shift of people not liking the Monday, Tuesdays and preferring having the Thursday, Fridays off. So there, that was back when we, a couple of years ago when we made that change, but that's definitely something I can include the next time we're getting feedback.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I do have a question about, and first I want to say thank you so much. I'm glad that there was over 700 community respondents. This is, that's fantastic for a survey about a calendar, 2627. So that's fantastic. Good job. I wanted, I'm curious about how the calendar is developed with educators and with our union representation. Is that done in advance of sending it out to, to the public for their review, and how is, how are their concerns captured?
I think it's, it's normally been part of the survey process. Part of what's challenging about the calendar is there's a lot of strict like requirements from the state of how, of like how things have to be. So there's not a ton of flexibility outside of things that have budgetary impacts. There's not a ton of flexibility on things we can do, and I don't want to.
Oh, I'll hop in. So I do have conversations with both union presidents regarding the calendar. One of the days reflected in April, that's a day off, actually came from FEA and saying, hey, we've looked at other school calendars around the state, and some districts have a day off in the spring, knowing that that spring semester can get really long. So we like that to have there. We like that there. With that said, we all, I've also heard feedback now that we've designated that day as a potential makeup day. You know, some people, you know, like that, some people don't, and so mixed reactions on that of building, you know, makeup days within the calendar itself.
Thank you. I have a question, and mine's actually in regards to the inclement weather days. My question is actually honestly just wondering if we don't maybe need to account for a couple more in there. I see we have three slated. I don't remember how many it was we used this year, but I think it was all of them.
We have five now.
Okay.
Five, yeah, so built into 2526 revised, and now this one has five inclement weather days. That was, Dr. Minor also had those, those thoughts, and so we wanted to build those in.
Perfect. That answers my question. I didn't, I, I see that now that it's five. Perfect. Okay, well then that's all the questions I have. Any other comments from board members, or can we open this up for public testimony? May I get a motion?
Move to adopt the proposed 202627 academic school year calendar.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, and we will now open it up for public testimony. And we do have one person signed up to testify, and that is Ms. Dinette Peterson. Good evening, Ms. Peterson. State your names, putting in your last, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Dinette Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N, Fairbanks. I'm the president of FEA, and so I'm speaking on behalf of FEA members. April Johnson would also be here to speak on the same topic, but she's traveling and she's sending you an email with similar concerns that I'm about to express. Dr. Minor touched on some of them. It was FEA that came forth and said, you know, that quarter four is a really long stretch. It's a month-long of testing, and other school districts across the state are starting to build in a, a school holiday in April. The issue that I have that has come to my attention is that using it as a makeup day for inclement weather, I believe is going to be extremely problematic. I am supportive of the school holiday, and I'm appreciative to Dr. Minor's responsiveness to the expressed need and the ongoing conversation. My concern is that it raises issues about staffing. If families and staff have already made plans for that long-awaited three-day holiday, as well as student attendance. Pulling back the school holiday could have the following consequences. Low student attendance due to families making plans for the extended weekend. Staff shortages that lead to concerns about student safety and supervision, especially in light of our sub-s shortages. Staff inadvertently being out of compliance with provisions of the negotiated contract and facing disciplinary action if they do take that day off as planned. I anticipate families and staff are going to make travel plans, whether it's going out to the cabin, visiting grandma, or, or whatever, for that long-awaited three-day holiday. And it might be cost prohibitive for some of those plans to be changed, and they may not have the leave to, that they need contractually. It additionally would create a higher percentage of staff being out than allowed by the contract. Other school districts across the state routinely, routinely add makeup days for inclement weather at the end of their calendars or designate in-service days. A couple of districts have board policies that address inclement weather days by lengthening existing school days and/or utilizing Saturdays. I looked long and hard at a lot. I didn't look at every school district calendar, but I did not find a single district calendar that used a school holiday as a potential makeup day for inclement weather, and I suspect it's because of the difficulties created by pulling back a school holiday that staff and families have made plans to utilize.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Peterson. Is there anybody who else who wishes to testify on the calendar? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed, and we will come back to the board, and we have a question from Mrs. Hardy on Zoom.
Yep, it's a question to the administration or Ms. Herbie. As far as our utilization of those inclement weather days, do we have a priority order? So if it were to stay as a holiday, it would be the last option, or are they just added in the calendar as, as they appear in the calendar?
In my mind, they're used as they appear in the calendar, and so the 24th would be the first day selected, and then we would go down the order 19, or 26, 27, 28 after that. I will say, I received a significant amount of feedback from the community this year about, can you put a day in the calendar, days in the calendar that account for inclement weather rather than adding on at the end? Some of the pieces that Ms. Peterson pointed out for that specific day, we also encounter when we add inclement weather days at the end of the calendar as well. We had a significant amount of high school students that we had to provide alternative final assessments for because they already had trips planned at the end of the school year. And so some of those challenges that were pointed out were already facing, and so that, adding that inclement weather day in the school calendar during the school year was a reaction to some of the community asked for that. We can't utilize professional development days. Those already count as student contact days. So that's not a place where we can go to designate that as an inclement weather day, because that already counts as a school day in our calendar for the state of Alaska.
May I?
Yes, you can follow up, Ms. Hardy.
Or make a statement. I appreciate all of that. I guess I, I would like to see us utilize the school holiday day as a later option, if possible, that would kind of address and, and find a middle ground than having that be the first option. I, I do think it is a long month in April, and people will likely take it off, and there is a good chance we will have to utilize inclement weather days. They're becoming far more common. So perhaps saying we do the first two at the end of May to make our, our, our school year slightly longer and planned out, and then, or somewhere along there, so it's not our first option.
Any other comments or questions from, oh, that's Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. Yes, I'm, I, thank you for asking that, Mrs. Hardy. I also wanted to know about the, kind of the ranking of that, and I would be in support of ranking the, the holiday in April as further down on that list. My question to the administration, though, I mean, so I'll speak to climate change, change for a second, because this is near and dear to my heart. We are experiencing climate change and the effects of climate change in the north to a far greater rate than anywhere else in the globe. So inclement weather is here to stay, and it's only going to get worse by orders of magnitude. Okay. Now back to the, what this means in regards to calendaring and also communication. So I, my question to the administration is if we were to not use the 23rd of April, which is currently scheduled as a holiday, a school district holiday, as an inclement weather day, what would we do instead? Would we extend it to potentially May 27th? And would that negatively impact union contracts?
Great question. We, so hearing all of that, my recommendation would not be to do like a ranked order and come back to the 24th after a couple of days. I feel like communicating that to the publicly, public clearly would create a lot of confusion. With that said, we, it would be my recommendation if we took the 24th off as an inclement weather day to add that on to May 29th, because we already have May 26th through the 28th also designated as days.
Okay.
Is that correct?
We currently have May 21st, 24th, 25th, and 26th. So if we were to add another day, it would be adding the 27th, if I'm understanding correctly.
I was looking at, I was flipping back between 25 and 20.
Yeah. Thank you.
I apologize. So we would add one day on at the end, and that would not have an impact on negotiated agreements. There is language around inclement weather days for both our SA and our FEA employees, but that would not impact the agreements that we have.
Okay. So it would be just extending a week that would already be extended. So I would be in support of that, so that, because I, I remember this year, we heard kind of extensively from educators to kind of build in that break, especially with all the testing that is done in our, in our schools in April. Having that day, having that light at the end of the tunnel where, where people can regroup, including, including students as well, and kind of get back into their rhythm before the end of the year. I would be in support of that. And to clarify what I'm in support of, it would be to remove the inclement weather makeup day from the 23rd of April, which is the intended, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm looking at, yes, from the 23rd of April, which is the, the school holiday, is it a school district holiday? Is that right? No. What are we, what are we? No, what are we, what are we calling it, Tim?
The no-school day.
No-school day.
It's a no-school day.
Yes, no-school day. So I would be, I would be in support of removing the inclement weather day from the 23rd and then adding an additional day for inclement weather makeup on the 27th of May. That's what I would be in support of changing.
Thank you, Mrs. Dulean. We have Mr. Doran and then Mr. Burgess.
Okay. Appreciating the comments that have been made and also from Ms. Peterson in testimony. Clarification, April 23rd is not a holiday.
Correct.
Correct, it's a no-school day.
So it is not part of the contract which recognizes holidays of any, any of the contracts. It's a no-school day, just as others. I also think we're getting into the management area, the administrative decision area, because if we cancel days, the administration needs to figure out how best to address that, to ma, do the makeup days. The state, a number of years ago, actually got very strict. It used to be pretty common, you had a inclement weather day. The state commissioner would say, okay, that's, that's fine, you know, it was a good decision, blah, blah. You don't need to make it up. That was changed about 20 years ago, and they've been very strict on that. So we have to figure those days in. I am mindful of the fact that adding days at the end of the school year, basically extending the calendar, if you will, is one of the easiest ways for us to do that, unless we just say, instead of 180 days, we're going to have 185 days of school. If we miss some for weather, we can do that, and many districts outside do that, and they just, you know, thinking New York City goes to the third week of June, and if they have a snow day, no big deal, they have lots, but they do a lot more days over the, they, they have that already built in the calendar, and you still go to school until June 21st or whatever it is. I'm mindful that when we sort of first ran into inclement weather days, which for us happened to be rain days in the winter predominantly, rather than snowfall, but it's, could be whatever, that we had to figure out how to do that, and we did, I believe, actually one year, maybe Ms. Plante remembers. I think we actually came in on a Saturday, or that was at least tossed around to have Saturday school to make it up, because we didn't have anything in the calendar, certainly an option. And we put in extra days, and then we had, went several years, were never using them. So things change and stuff, so in one way, I don't want to spend a lot of time on whether we have extra days or not. We have notification out. I think it's much easier to accommodate people's schedules and the conversations usually that I've heard is within the school calendar than when you say, we're going to stay later in May. And people do have plans, et cetera, for getting out, heading out on longer vacations, things of that sort. Or school classes, starting as many of our teachers take classes during the, the summer. So I am comfortable where we're at. I think the fact that the response, positive responsiveness from the administration in putting forth the calendar really took in that idea that, yes, it's a long time from spring break to the end of the school year. It's good to have that day. We typically had a professional development day in there to give some break. I like the fact that we're front-ending those professional days. In, in general, I like that. So I think this is a, a good plan. It allows the administration, if we have to do a day or multiple days, to try and figure out where is that best? And it could be that come spring, even the associations will say, oh, wait a minute, let's get it done. We can do this. Less people may be impacted by a three-day weekend versus a three-month summer break if we have to go out, extend the year. So, so I'm very comfortable where we are, but I do want it very clear that we are not talking about holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Doran, for that clarification. Before we jump to Mr. Burgess, I just wanted to say that I agree with Mr. Doran. I think we kind of are treading into the realm of management. Though I do understand the thoughts and comments around this, my opinion would be that we trust the administration to let them figure it out as we get there, that we have slated days. But I do feel that this is a bit in the management realm, which is outside of what we do as a board. With that, Mr. Burgess and then Mrs. Hardy.
Move to amend the calendar to remove April 23rd as a makeup day and add May 27th as a substitute.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to remove April 23rd as a makeup day and add in May 27th. Is there more discussion around this? Mr. Burgess, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. Considering the testimony that we heard last night, I think those concerns are valid. And if we have a no-school day on the calendar, people will make plans around that, I, I would assume. I know that I probably would. So I think that for the benefit of our, our families and our staff, we should, we should, if we're going to have a no-school day on that day, we should keep it that way and not risk, you know, that, that kind of what's the word I'm looking for? That, that, you know, forcing people to, to change their plans or, or interfering with plans that might be made.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Did Mrs. Hardy still have a question? And I guess this would be in regards to the amendment.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hardy.
Um, so question and then hopefully a follow-up comment to the administration. Did we use any inclement weather days this year?
Yes, we did.
How many?
Three, I believe.
Three.
So under the comment, thank you. Given that, it's almost likely in a surety that we will use one, which would make this hollit, or this non-school day not actually be a non-school day. We're offering it and then pretty much guaranteeing that it won't happen if it's going to be the first one we do. With respect to Dr. Minor, I think it's a great compromise to say, let's not have the 23rd, and to both Mr. Burgess and Ms. Julian's point, let's add another day in May. I will also say, I don't think that this is treading into management. I, I remember last year, and I think the year before, we talked and changed things within the calendar, changing it so that Mondays were, were the days they had off instead of other days. It's part of our job as the board to manage the calendar, and the administration informs and advises us in that decision. But we're not getting into other people's playing fields by talking about these issues, and I think it's listening to constituents and listening to our union membership. To, to honor, they've requested a day in April. It was honored in the calendar, and now we realize that it might not be giving them what they need if we take it away, pretty much guaranteed that we're going to have an inclement weather day. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Is there any other comments regarding the amendment, Mr. Doran?
Yes, I'm not going to support the amendment. And part of my concern is adding the 27th as another inclement makeup day. I know they're tentative, but we're really asking everybody, families and staff, to really wait on summer plans for another basically full week. And so I think that's asking more than what is necessary and on something that we really don't know whether it will happen or not.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. I'm going to jump in and actually say, due to Mrs. Hardy's comments, I'm actually going to change up and support this. Few points Mrs. Hardy made were absolutely correct, and so I will support this. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, oh, Ms. Dr. Minor.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Next year's calendar does have that April day as an inclement weather day, and so listening.
Point of order, we're focusing on the 26, 27 calendar.
Mr. Doran, this is very much relevant to the 26, 27 calendar, as Dr. Minor is trying to point out something from this calendar that does affect the 26, 27. So Dr. Minor, if you would, please continue.
Yeah, just wanted on record that I would probably follow the board's intent with this vote to reflect that on next year's calendar in terms of my prioritization. Wouldn't actually change the calendar itself because the board's already adopted that, but in terms of my utilization of those days.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Any conversation from the board? Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you. And to Dr. Minor's comment about the communication to the public, I think that it's incredibly important because, you know, when families plan around no-school days, there, people have to adjust schedules, and there's a lot of shift workers in our community, a lot of military families. And so the more that we can provide a, a surety that there, this calendar is what the calendar will be, and if we're going to extend with inclement weather, it's in these days and, and potentially not taking away a day that, that families may be planning around. I appreciate you with that communications aspect as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dulean. Any further conversation from the board? Seeing none, at this time, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the amendment, which is to strike April 23rd and add May 27th as an inclement weather day?
Colonel Cole?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
No.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Now that takes us to the original motion, which will be as amended with the April 23rd struck and May 27th put in as the inclement weather day. Is there any discussion? Mr. Doran?
I'm not going to make a motion on this, so you know, but I'm going to express a thought on it. Because again, I think a lot of this has to do with management and administration action. But I would encourage keeping the May 21st in-service day or workday, rather, as less of a priority for makeup because it is an important time for teachers to wrap up their work for the year at the school and things like that, and do the checkout and, and make sure everything is, is set there. And because I also think that those, one of the benefits of our district has been for, for teachers is working, work, putting workdays into our calendar. A lot of districts don't do that. And I, I think having worked in districts that did not do it and working in this district that does, it has proven really beneficial. So I would keep that as a low priority, although necessary perhaps. The other thing is that I'll support the overall calendar, though I did not support the change, the amendment to it, but the, I'll support it because I think also keeping in mind that if we have six, seven days of inclement weather, five aren't going to be enough. And the administration will come back to us with things, and this is two years away, and if circumstances change. We've had snow in May, third week of May, and so it could be different things that the administration will be able, will perhaps need to bring back to us, could bring back, and as a board, we will do that. Just as we may possibly wind up, when I'm thinking of ASOG, we may have to adjust the calendar, depending if that's within our school and that impact, and we've done that in other years to facilitate the, the regional, Region 6 hosting of, of ASOG. So calendar changes may happen. I'm confident in the administration to bring them forward as, as needed when we get there.
Thank you, Mr. Doran.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Rules have been suspended, so we can continue on with our work. Is there any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the adoption of the proposed 26, 27 academic school calendar as amended?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on, next up is our superintendent employment agreement approval. The school board formed a contracts committee consisting of three board members. This committee collaborated with Dr. Minor and the district's attorney to reach an agreement on contractual items through the 27, 28 school year. May I get a motion?
Move to approve the contract with Dr. Luke Minor for the position of superintendent of the Fairbanks North Starborough School District extending through the 20, 27 to 20, 28 school year.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on the contract? Seeing no public comment, public testimony is now closed. Coming back to the board, is there any discussion on the contract from the board? Mr. Doran?
Okay, I'd like to give a report from the committee on this and really thank Ms. Maple and Mr. Burgess for participating in the conversation that we had with Superintendent Minor. And we are happy to bring this to the board for your full approval. For the public, I think it's important to recognize that this is a one-year extension to a current contract under state law. A superintendent can only have a three-year contract at a given time. And so there is, when you have a good superintendent, you want to keep them. And we've gone through several superintendent searches over the years that I've been on the board here. And so it's nice to have found someone who stepped into the role and has performed well, reflective in our evaluation. He, we look forward to his continued growth and contributions as our superintendent. And the importance, when I looked around, you know, why, why do you want to give a three-year contract? Why do you want to have that? It's for continuity that benefits our district and our families and students, but also benefits a superintendent who has a lot of decisions to make. That, how you problem-solve these things, you want to have some continuity you're building over time, and as, as an administrator, you know, the fact that you're in a place for an extended period of time, you get to know and nuances. period of time, you get to know and nuances of things, and how you can build on things, and meet the needs over time. It's stability. I've watched a lot of districts, actually I was on a webinar Monday, and that actually focused on superintendent searches, and one board member who is in their first term has gone through seven superintendents. Unbelievable. And sharing their experiences, etc., they, their newest one, their eighth, will start July 1. So stability is very, very important. And, and so part of what we took as representing the board to that was keeping that in mind, continuity, stability. We were negotiating one year, not the previous two, because those already are in the contract and stuff. So I think that's important for people to know. It also, in terms of this, is it keeps us competitive as we move forward. Several years ago, we were in a position where we had not kept up with superintendent contracts, and it meant a major, major jump. And we were actually not competitive nationally, so we need to be in that ballpark. And so we're very happy to bring this contract forward as a team, and want to say a compliment to Dr. Minor in terms of his approach to us, he was a conversation reasonable, informed. And when we look at the districts around the state, it keeps us competitive. We are not the highest by any means. And so I think it's important that people understand that. So we're very glad to bring, bring this contract to the board for your approval tonight.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Doran. Are there any comments from board members? Mrs. Dullian?
I just want to say that I'm really looking forward to supporting this motion that's on the floor, and I'm very grateful to Dr. Minor and your leadership, as you have proven that you focus on data and you let data lead your decision-making, and also you are constantly refocusing on the strategic priorities and the goals that you've set. And not every leader is like that. So thank you for continuing to focus on the things and also prioritize your time and your resources and drive your team in a way that is supporting our students tremendously.
Thank you, Mrs. Dullian. I'd also like to speak to this and just say that, one, as a board member, who has had two administrators now in my single year, single term so far on this board, that they have been drastically different experiences. And that's a great thing. You seem to find 72 hours in a 24-hour time period. I have yet to figure out how you do that. There's not been a single Saturday or Sunday that has gone by that you have not been reachable. Even when you were away with your son for baseball, you respond to board members, you respond to the community, and you respond to things that are happening. And that is paramount. And so thank you, Dr. Minor, for your leadership, and I too am proud to and honored to support this contract and keep you on board with us. We have definitely lucky to have you with us. Any other comments? Mr. Doran?
I'd say one other thing, because I, I'm gonna take an opportunity to brag about Dr. Minor. I've been part of negotiating superintendent contracts and monitoring them for quite some time, sometimes as a board member, sometimes as one of our association leaders in the district. And a thing that I really appreciated, and we saw it in action tonight, is that when very first time sat down to negotiate a contract with Dr. Minor as superintendent, he put in his suggestion of setting annual goals, and quickly it came to, you know, that it would be mutually approved goals. I mean, so, because the conversation between board and superintendent, which I think was really, really significant in tonight's report that, and you've done it other times, but, and I know we'll get even a fuller report in terms of those goals, but you come back to the goals setting for each year, they've been part of our conversation when we talk about evaluations, and that we do want to be accountable, you want to be accountable in reporting on kids. And I think when we talk about leadership, and I've followed superintendents in many districts, not particularly in the state, but over the years, and I think that leadership really, really shows, and that the fact that you're committed to it. You suggested that in the very first contract. It's still in there. So, so you actually play it out, you act upon what you say, and I think that's significant. That benefits our students particularly, as well as the rest of us.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. We're gonna go to Mrs. Hardy and then to Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, I want to speak in strong support of the contract extension and the work that was done to negotiate it. I, like Ms. Burnett, have experienced two different, well, CSA and a superintendent, and it's a night and day difference. And I have really enjoyed working with Dr. Minor and learned so much from his leadership, and also his collaborative nature when approaching difficult decisions and topics. And while I won't be continuing on this board, I think that he is the right person to both lead our district and to help the future board as it goes forward navigate what are really difficult times in public education. Just with that, really happy to support it, and thank you, Dr. Minor.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I really appreciated being part of the negotiating team. It was a learning experience for me, and I wanted to comment that one of the, one of the items that the team discussed was just how reasonable Dr. Minor's proposal was. And, you know, that's, I think, reflective of, of his leadership and how he views his role in the district. And I appreciate setting the example, so I'll leave it there, but that was, it was a great experience and happy that we ended where we did. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Any other comments from the board? Ms. Maple?
I'm just always on the other side of those negotiating conversations, where I have to leave the room and wait and wonder, and I just really enjoy being on this end of it for once. And I really am glad that you're our superintendent and are gonna stick around.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Any other comments? Seeing none at this time, Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the superintendent employment agreement approval?
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster and Colonel Cole have left the meeting, so Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dullian?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Up next and last on our agenda under information and reports is our Resolution 2025-21, Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms. Mrs. Dullian, would you do the honors of reading the resolution?
Yes, it would be my honor, and I had it up, and so forgive me, President Burnett, because it's not on my screen right now. Okay, um, here we go. Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education Resolution 25-21, Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms. Whereas the safety and well-being of students and staff are paramount importance, and whereas a national survey found that 57% of our youth are concerned that there will be a shooting in their school, and the percentage of our students who report feeling safe at school substantially decreases, decreased between 2021 and 2022. And whereas in Alaska, firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens ages zero to 19. An average of 20 children and teens ages zero to 19 in Alaska die from firearms every year. And one in 10 Alaskan, Alaska adults living in a home with an unlocked and loaded firearm. And whereas unsecured guns in the home pose a risk to our students beyond gun violence in schools, every year an average of 350 youth under the age of 18 unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else, amounting to approximately one unintentional shooting per day. Whereas gun-involved suicide among our youth has reached the highest rate in more than 20 years. And in most child-gun-involved suicides, the gun is used, the gun used belonged to someone in their home. Research shows that secure firearm storage practices are associated with up to 85% reduction in the risk of self-inflicted and unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens. Storing firearms securely protects any child in the home, as well as students throughout the school district and community. And whereas, Fairbanks North Starborough School District was the first school district in Alaska to partner with the Be Smart campaign and encourages responsible firearm ownership for risk mitigation by providing students and staff with a safe educational environment. And whereas, the Be Smart campaign was created to bring together all responsible adults to reduce suicides and the number of unintentional shootings that occur when children get a hold of an unsecured firearm. And whereas, the Be Smart campaign encourages responsible firearm ownership and aims to reduce firearm deaths as a result of children accessing unsecured firearms, and raises awareness about unintentional shootings by children and how to store firearms in the home securely. And whereas, parents and caretakers are encouraged to be Be Smart, to Be Smart by taking five simple steps to help prevent shooting by children. S, secure all firearms in your home and vehicles. M, model responsible behavior around firearms. A, ask about the presence of unsecured firearms in other homes. R, recognize the risk of teen suicide. T, tell your peers to be smart. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Starborough School District and Board of Education will continue partnering with the Be Smart campaign to help keep our schools safe by collaborating and distributing the Be Smart Safe and Secure Firearms Storage information and resources to Fairbanks North Starborough students, staff, families, and community members.
Thank you, Mrs. Dullian. And now we will move on into our board and super, yes, Mr. Doran?
Couple of comments regarding this. Not to belabor things, but I think it's really important. I appreciate that we have this resolution, and that it was brought forth last year and now this year by board members. But I do want to acknowledge also the long partnership that the district has had in this regard. And it goes back over a dozen years, I don't know exactly how many beyond that. We've, and for much longer than that, we would have personal safety things in our schools, we continue to do it, but that also addressed, if you find a gun, what do you do? How do you handle those things, and keeping yourself safe and reporting to an adult, etc. But this was really brought, this particular type of partnership was brought to the board by Kate Wool and the U Park PTA. And we've participated in helping to send flyers home throughout the years, etc. So I think just extending that appreciation for this community partnership on this, that we're involved with it. And I'm also very mindful that this depends on the community. This is not a problem in schools. Doesn't originate in schools, but it's just keeping kids safe for things that are outside the school, that are in their, in their realm, and being mindful for them. And I am thrilled with a lot of young parents that I've talked to over the years, who do have firearms or other implements in their, that could be dangerous to their children, who really work hard at their, keeping them secure and safe, and also work with their children. I think that parent to child, community member to child, and we have organizations in the state that help teach safety. So I just want to really emphasize that, because I think it is so important, and it's a relatively new resolution for us, that, that, that partnership. And I'm gonna end with the fact that this partnership makes me mindful of when we talk about personal devices, that that's also a partnership that extends well beyond the walls of the schools and to our homes and our community. And so this is just one example of how our community involvement makes a real difference for the well-being of our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Is there any other comments from board members? Seeing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda into our board and superintendent comments. And we will start down here with Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. I want to start by talking about the state budget and our governor. Governor Dunleavy has until June 19th to make his changes to the budget. He has signaled that he is strongly considering cutting education funding, despite the bipartisan effort by the legislature to produce a bill that includes policy compromises along the lines of what the governor has been looking for. Not sure why he wouldn't support this bill, considering the amount of effort that went into it from many members of our legislature, and considering that, that it does include some policy changes that he wants. So I encourage everyone to contact the governor's office, point these things out to him, remind him that you can't always get everything you want, and that we should not wait for what we consider perfect when there is a compromise on the table that moves the needle. We absolutely need every penny that we can get, and any further cuts would be devastating to our ability to deliver quality education in our community and really throughout the Moving on to a different topic, June is Pride Month. Pride celebrates the LGBTQIA+ community, their rights and humanity. It started as a riot, known as a Stonewall Riot on June 28th, 1969, when a bar in Greenwich Village was raided by police, and LGBTQ people resisted, fighting for their rights of freedom, individuality, and self-expression, their right to simply exist and be who they are. Since that time, great strides have been made in support of the rights of LGBTQIA+ people, and we have seen a general trend towards tolerance, then acceptance, then embrace and celebration of the diversity and the unique perspectives that queer people bring to the table. In recent years, we have seen a threat to this community and a change in that trend. Let me take that back. I don't think we've seen a change in that trend, but we have seen halting progress, efforts to halt progress. And this is primarily a result of political opportunism that utilizes fear and misinformation to foment division in our communities and seize upon that fear. to foment division in our communities and seize upon that fear and misinformation to maintain political power. Celebration of pride now is more important than ever, as is our responsibility as human beings and members of our community, uh, who value ethics and diversity, to stand up for all people. I want every member of the queer community, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, aromantic, nine, non-binary, and all others who I may have missed or who aren't defined by labels. I want each of you to know that you are valid, you are loved, you are seen and valued for who you are. I want every LGBTQI-plus member of our school district, whether staff, students, families, to know that I will stand up for your rights unequivocally, without hesitation, no matter what political pressures come. Now is the designated month to celebrate, but I say let's celebrate our diverse and unique and special and flamboyant and fun personalities and identities all the time. Let us all recognize the value of different perspectives and ways of thinking, understand the liberation that comes from this recognition and the freedom of self-expression and individuality that is a fundamental guiding value of our country enshrined in our Constitution's Bill of Rights. Let us set aside our judgment and bias and recognize the human rights and dignity that is our inherent rights as human being, ensuring that those rights are preserved for one and all. Happy Pride, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. We're going to jump to Zoom to Mrs. Hardy.
I don't have much other than I wish everyone a really safe and fun summer break and follow Mr. Burgess, everyone a happy Pride.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. Um, I want to restate what I said, um, at the last meeting, uh, which was that as a nearly united board, um, we support our president, Mrs. Burnett. We do support you and we thank you for working so hard and for doing such a great job this year. We appreciate you. Um, we want to thank our administration, um, for all that they do. Uh, without them, we can't, we wouldn't be here. So we appreciate you guys. Um, we also all support our policies and our procedures. And, um, I kind of want to get off on a tangent about the policies and procedures, uh, because they exist for a reason. Um, without policies and procedures, we do have chaos and they, um, establish clear, step-by-step instructions, uh, procedures ensure consistency and efficiency. Um, we have stated repeatedly that we are going to hold to our board policies. And, um, the bottom line is that our deadline for charter school applications is October first. And, um, I guess i- it's kind of the elephant in the room because nobody just wants to say, "You're late." And if you're late to an airplane, they don't open that door. If the coupon expires, you can't cash it in. If your insurance policy lapses, there's no coverage. The deadline was October first, and I understand we didn't close the school until February. But that was not really a vindictive move. It was a budget move. It was a consolidation move. And for some reason, that just keeps getting overlooked and I'm not really understanding why. Um, and maybe we weren't clear as a board that we were going to follow our procedures and our policies. Um, and so maybe we needed to do a little bit better job explaining that. Um, but I just want to go on the record, uh, again, um, I want to say that, you know, exceptions were expected and exceptions were then demanded and the exceptions were denied. And it's unfortunate, um, that timing is what it is because, um, none of us disagree with charter schools. I don't think there's anybody on the, on the board that disagrees with charter schools. Um, none of us are against charter schools. We aren't against innovation. We're not against hope. Um, we're for local schools and we are for our students. We're for excellence in education and opportunities for everyone. And, um, we are standing up for the rest of the community who, um, you, there's eleven thousand students and, um, I... The idea that the announcement of a closure in February is somehow justification for an exception, um, has caused so much confusion and unrealistic expectation. Um, I know that closing schools is never easy, but with the reduction in population, consolidation was what we had to do. And we just have too many open seats in our schools to justify keeping more schools open and opening additional schools. A lot of it is just a matter of, of, of budgeting and money and, and there's just, there's no two ways around that. Um, I would like to say thank you to the many who have emailed support, um, who had email, who have emailed us in support of the board and of our administration, of our policies and our schools. We have received many very, very kind emails telling us, "Keep doing what you're doing. Don't give in," and, and in support of our deadline. Um, so thank you for that because we, we need to hear that. Um, so we all appreciate your support and we value hearing that you understand that school consolidation is the issue and that you all believe that we are making the best decisions for the eleven thousand students and for the entire community. Um, I want to, um, to thank the board members, uh, for, for just remaining strong and for just holding the line. It's really, really hard to do under pressure and I am very proud to be part of this board. I'm very happy. Um, I'm so eager to learn more and to get more involved, uh, in the educational process because I absolutely love it. I've been digging into data and I'm a data freak. I love data. Um, and so I have been doing all kinds of, of work around, uh, the website and digging into test scores and all this stuff. And I understand some people want to make sure to say that children are more than test scores and I get that. Success is more than a test score. I understand that. But we do, it's been said tonight, that we do have an obligation to improve our test scores and to make sure that we are proving what we're doing. And the only way to prove it is kind of by the, by the data. So, uh, Dr. Minor, thank you that you also are a data hound. Um, we love that and I appreciate that about, that about you because I'm, I'm kind of a math person and, um, so I appreciate it. Um, I, I appreciate the attendance improvement of the school district. I know that I was talking to one of the teachers, um, a former teacher from Weller. She was giving me these numbers that were outrageous, sixty-five, seventy-five, eighty-five days missed of school and you just go, "How does a person do that?" Um, so thank you, uh, to the teachers. Thank you to the principals of the schools. Thank you to, uh, even to the students and to the parents who are making an effort to improve attendance because if your students aren't at school, then they're missing out. And so we want them to be at school and we want them to be participating. And I want to just say congratulations to all the students and all the teachers for working so hard and accomplishing so much this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. We're going to take a quick pause and we're going to jump over to Dr. Minor. I'm a little tired this afternoon. I forgot you had a comment, so Dr. Minor, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And normally I don't have closing comments, but just really wanted to thank the board for your continued support, uh, shown through tonight's, um, action and just over and over again, the support that you've shown me, uh, throughout my superintendency. Uh, superintendents like to continue to work for good boards and we have a great board here in Fairbanks that makes all the difference in the world in terms of me wanting to continue to approach this work day in and day out. Uh, you guys have faced more challenges than I think any other board has in Fairbanks history and you've done it with great skill, um, and expertise and I continue to just value the work, uh, that we do, uh, together. So thank you for your support and look forward to continuing to work, uh, together to better the future of our students here in Fairbanks.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Jumping back over, Mrs. Julian.
Thanks. Um, I'm going to share a, a personal story that relates to our work here on the board. Um, when I, I, I work at the, uh, up at the university. Uh, I live in the Pearl Creek area. When I got pregnant for the first time, and I have, um, three children, when I heard from university folks was, "Thank God you live in the Pearl Creek area. You live in the Golden Triangle. You live in the best, the best district. You're, you're in the best place to raise a kid because your kids get to go to Pearl Creek. And then they're going to get to go to Randy Smith and then they're going to get to go to West Valley." I was sold a story. I was sold a story by my employer, by my neighbors, by my friends, that I was making the best decision for my family. My husband and I then moved. We had an opportunity where we, well, we actually needed to move because I said we have three kids now. Um, so we needed to expand and when we were looking for a new house, we only looked in the Pearl Creek District. We were told a story, right? Why wouldn't we as parents want to choose the best place to live in the best school district? Um, last year, when school, before I entered this board, when I was in the public, I was proud and I still am proud that I, um, took action to try to get more funding for local schools locally by, um, being the face of, of Proposition A to ask taxpayers locally if they'd want to increase the tax cap by ten million dollars for education. Um, again, though, when I started really digging in to the school district as a whole, I realized the story that I had been told wasn't really true. There are tremendous innovations happening at our schools. There is tremendous growth in reading, in math, and science. There is STEM education at all of our schools. The university professors are innovating by volunteering at all of our schools. When I went out to, to Salchah, when I went to Weller, and I speak to those two campuses because they're very similar to Pearl Creek. It's not, they're, that one school isn't the only school that has amazing access to outdoor, outdoor, um, an outdoor campus. Every school is amazing and, and every school, there's different variations, but there is growth happening. I was told a story by my employer that drove me to make personal decisions about where I live because I wouldn't dare do anything that wasn't the best for my kids. When you change the way you look at things, the things you look at change. This last month, my family said goodbye to our school and it was sad, but two things can be true at the same time. We also got our kids t-shirts for the new school that they're going to be attending. We started going to those activities and my kids are now all so super excited to be going to their new school next fall. There's a Girl Scout troop, there's archery, there's orchestra, there's a ski hill, not just ski trails, but, and it's different. And they can still be sad, but as a parent, it has been a real tremendous exercise to try to, um, allow for the space of grief, but also make way, force for excitement. Um, so I, for anybody who's listening from the Midnight Sun community, from the Two Rivers community, from the Pearl Creek community, or from students, families that are being redistricted because of our redistricting plan, I just want you to know that I too was very scared. But when I looked at the data, I became very confident that my kids are going to be successful and that this school district is making tremendous, tremendous investments in all of our students and I'm so proud of that. And then I want to say one other thing, switching topics. I want to respond to something that was, that was, um, brought up tonight several times about investing in homeschooling as we're closing schools. So in response to a community need, this board made a decision to make an investment. Now, they are not huge investments. They're, they're very small investments to the tune of like a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, um, to stand up satellite centers for best correspondence in two very strategic areas that are growing in population and/or have very large homeschooling communities. Twenty percent of students enrolled in public schools in this borough attend out-of-district public correspondence programs. I think it is a false narrative to say that the only way that we're going to attract one hundred out-of-district students is to stand up one in-person school. And the easier thing to do would be to say, "Homeschooling works for you. Why don't you come to the homeschooling program with the Fairbanks North Starborough School District?" I think that's an easier jump to make than coming to a physical location in itself. So I do believe that we will see an uptick, hopefully, in our best homeschooling programs with that strategic investment and, um, I thank this board for being proactive and strategic.
Thank you, Mrs. Julian. Mr. Doran?
Uh, thank you. And I'm going to start with a request, uh, of the administration through the chair. Uh, as I've traveled around the district and go on my walks and stuff, I see a variety of summer projects going on. Um, and, uh, if it's reasonable, and I, I know in the past, we, the board has sometimes gotten a list of the summer projects, uh, it's probably there. It, I would like to request that it would be good to, to get that, um, because also you get the question of, "Oh, what's going on over there?" And, uh, sometimes I can go over and talk to the contractors and say, "Oh, I did that today and I'm one of them." Um, and so it, it, we can be a conduit, um, uh, in information to the district. So, um, maybe put that in the hopper if it's reasonable. Um, I want to take a moment to comment in terms of the, uh, the involvements of our board and that the interactions with other boards. As I mentioned, the Anchorage School Board invitation to, uh, be able to, um, be a part of their board retreat this Saturday, um, but also that, uh, which is important to, to hear from different boards and what issues they're dealing with and, and things like that. Where we have commonalities, where we have differences and, uh, each of our communities are unique, so, uh, but it's just good information. Um, also that Fairbanks is, has the opportunity to be represented on the State Association of School Boards, uh, Board of Directors. Ms. Burnett and myself are on that and will be meeting, uh, for summer meeting, uh, in July. Uh, but again, an opportunity to interface with different board members, be able to bring things back and make sure, um, our concerns as a, as a district are also, uh, at the table. Um, so great opportunities. Which brings me to something that I like to encourage, um, other board members to think about. I mentioned earlier this year and a couple of occasions that I am fortunate to have been selected as a fellow for the School Board Partners. Um, it's a national organization that trains, supports, uh, connects diverse school board members across the country to lead, um, with courage, competence, and impact. Um, this has been a real pleasure to be a part of. Um, there, uh, every other week, uh, there's a webinar, we focus on different topics. Um, and, uh, And so, there's that training piece. There's that exchange. Those are via Zoom. But talking to 75 other fellows from across the country, hearing their experiences, sometimes similar. Funding issues for a number of the, the districts across the country and states. Some districts, that is not their issue. They have other things. I mentioned one where heavy turnover of superintendents. And so, how do you get a momentum going and that focus on the community? So, that exchange of ideas being so important for us. And they really divided up into their focus, folk I, governance, equity, leadership, and self-care. And underlying all of that is the statement of "Kids First" policies, which again, I'm going to say is really reflected in our strategic plan vision. You know, what we really want for students and keeping that focus in front of us. So, the, the aspects of it is, yes, just as a fellow, you get this conversation. But it also includes getting a mentor. And I am thrilled that I have a mentor. Somebody who is going to give me feedback, believe it or not, and actually, but, you know, to exchange ideas. It's, is part of, we're a learning organization, and as a board, we're learners. And actually, people have referenced that in their comments over times. That, and, and so, it's a thrill having that. And this gentleman worked with me over the next six months. He asked for a board meeting that, to watch. I did not give him tonight, so I'm not on stage. I'm not doing it. I took one in the past, and just, he'll, he'll give me feedback, you know, on, on me, not you guys, on me. So, it's that focus. And then, there's a conference that's part of this. So, it's really a year-long piece. We started in January with the webinars. There, the mentor will work with me through the end of the, through, through December. And then, there's a conference in July, in of all places, Phoenix in July. But it's called Our Collective Power, and it'll bring fellows from around the, and alumni of fellows from around the country together for a couple of weeks, and I'm going to go down for that. And just these opportunities, extremely diverse group. I know I'm going to be pushed. There'll be some aspects of it that I'm going to be uncomfortable with. Others that I'll say, "Oh, yeah, this is, this is cool, and I've, I've been here. I know this," whatever. But I mention it because I think it's a good accountability to, to the public to know that we're involved with this. But I also want to encourage and put it on the radar for board members to think about possibly applying to be a fellow when they open up that for, in the fall for the next cohort. I will remind you when it comes out, but just to, to think about possibly getting involved in it. And I was struck, even as we do these comments, and I think it's really important that as a board, we have these comments. Not every board does this because we learn from each other and listening to each other's general comments. It's helpful to, to get to know each other. And so, I want to thank board members for your participation and the superintendent in our wrap-up comments. And I'm moving to my wrap-up comments, okay? So, keep School Board Partners in mind. I was the first one from Alaska. We'd love to get more people from Alaska. The last thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is what's wonderful about, as time goes on, you keep pondering stuff and thinking about it. It was actually a couple of years ago that Dr. Minert first mentioned The Anxious Generation, the book. And I finally got to read it, thanks to Ms. Carol Hubbard for lending me her copy. As people know, I kind of like the paper. It's there. But to, and, and yes, it does talk about cell phones and stuff like this, but I think that's the least of what's in it. It just happens to be an avenue of conversation. The important thing, and I'm going to link this with the strategic plan and the projected conversations that superintendent is going to be leading our community through, is that it brings up the, the book and other readings I've done by other authors and articles, et cetera. And just knowing it as a principal and watching it, the importance of play in our schools, recess in our schools, the hands-on, and the importance of, you know, a lot of the, not, a lot of the CTE classes, the, the applications. We've had biology courses, chemistry courses that are based on being really hands-on and practical. And we've called them different things. We've had exploratory in middle school, and we have it now. I, I think of the shop program over at Tanana, which is an absolute pleasure to go into wood shop there. The importance of doing those early on and not just waiting until, oh, you're, you know, junior and senior year, and you've got more electives to do and, and stuff like this, but letting kids really get into that. But doing those things, meeting needs of, of all our students, boys, girls, and all our students. The, the importance of taking risk in a safe environment. When we talk about books and things we might discuss, taking risks, providing those risk opportunities, those conversations that kids bring to the fore. And whether they're doing literature, whether they're doing political sciences, you know, sciences themselves, rate, being able to raise the questions that are so important. And I'm mindful of that partially because the testimonies we've had, not just the last three, four months, but the, over years, actually, spanning. The people who come and challenge us, I want to say thank you to them. They, because they are the ones that are going to make our strategic plan vital. They're the ones who are going to push us to think in terms of how we work with students. They're the ones who are going to force us to come back to "Kids First," where is our focus. And, and I really want to say thank you to them, even when they make me uncomfortable sometimes. And that can be from a variety of perspectives. Even if we're seemingly in agreement, their agreement and my agreement of looking at that may be a little bit different, and it forces me. And that's why I appreciate also the comments from board members at the end of, and not only at the end, but during the thing. So, that to me is something that's really, really important. And it is mindful that the conversations in the actual implementation of our strategic plan, there may be aspects of building trust, exchanging those ideas, sometimes rebuilding it. But I heard that in testimony as well as I heard it from the day I was here, that the importance of, of working with that and really using that strategic plan is, what do we want for our kids? I'm excited about it. I'll let you know what happens in Phoenix on the School Board Partners Conference, and I'll bring that back. And again, just, just really want to encourage board members to think about the possibility of participating in that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran, and that'll bring me to me. I wasn't really going to say anything tonight, but in my personal capacity as a private citizen, since that seems to be the thing we say now, and not in my role as the board president, I just truly want to speak to how exhausting it is to listen to testimony and to have this board be looked at that mean board. Those mean board members. That president, she lacks leadership. That president doesn't know what she's doing. This board has no clue. It's exhausting. None of us are trying to be vindictive or mean. All these conversations that keep coming up, I have personally talked to two people in this community about this subject. Two, two people. Out of those two conversations with those two people have circulated all kinds of things, which I have timestamped screenshots of. So, if anybody has questions, I have it. And I'm not afraid to share it, and I am not afraid to speak to the truth. We've got eggs being thrown, tires being slashed. That's a thing that's happening to board members right now over trying to make the best decisions possible for our district. And while I accept that there's always going to be dissension, and I accept that, sure, my politics suck. Sure, that's okay. That's okay to believe. It really is. It's okay to not agree with people politically and, and whatever. And maybe this is uncalled for. Maybe I don't have to speak and defend myself, but it's exhausting. So, please do better. We're all trying to do better. I try on a daily basis for the last three years to do better. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We are now adjourned.